Mike. Call the meeting to order. This is the, oops, hold on just a sec, get back to my starting spot here. So this is the March fifteenth meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodman?
Here.
Vice Chair Foss?
Here.
Councilor Champlin?
Here.
Member Smithmire?
Here.
Member Fox?
Here.
Member Savage?
Here.
Member Santa Cruz?
Here.
Okay, do have a quorum. We'll open the meeting. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the February fifteenth, 2023 meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, roundly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries a quick agenda overview. First and foremost, I want to just give a quick shout out to the good folks at Concord TV. Both Mike and Steve over the years have done a great job. I have never watched a Concord Planning Board meeting in ten years. Unfortunately missed last month's meeting and had to watch it on TV and it was terrible. The video was terrible, the audio was terrible. I called to complain and they said, don't watch it on Comcast. Go to the streaming service for YouTube and it'll come in crystal clear. So if you have YouTube streaming at your house and are sick of turning your volume up to one hundred and ten or the video cutting out, watch it on Comcast or watch it on YouTube streaming and it's crystal clear and the audio comes in great. So continue to do a great job, guys. Thank you. For our agenda items tonight, we've got items seven H and seven I have both been requested to postpone to the April nineteenth meeting of the planning board. Would someone like to make a motion to postpone those two items?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll postpone those two and I'm going to take one out of order. Sorry, guys. For a quick heads up, item eight, item eight under other business, the Caleb Group has requested an amendment to an approved site plan to add a new utility pole and a waiver from section twenty-five oh-two-one of the site plan regulations to allow an overhead utility as part of the construction for phase two of this multifamily development. This is a phase two piece and they've got a massive delay in getting a ground mounted transformer. So they're requesting in order to meet their occupancy if they can get a, if they can get a, if they can get a waiver. Heather, help me out here. What's the waiver?
A waiver from section twenty-five point oh-two subsection one to allow overhead utilities.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes.
I have one question because I know we're going to be dealing with this a lot in the near future. Is this a temporary condition and when the transformer becomes available, they then have to take all the poles out and put the ground from the pole into the transformer to the rest?
No, this is permanent.
Why not?
So the waiver, we're not, we haven't asked to put that condition on the plan, to put it frankly. There are property owners who may want to do that. We're not requiring them to do that. It's up to two years. So it's quite, and we don't, that's, that's even if they get here in two years. So we really don't know how long it will actually take to start getting these ground mounted transformers again. But it's far enough out that we're not looking to, that's not something that we suggested or required.
It may not be a bad thing to bring up maybe with, with the city solicitor's office or something from an internal perspective on how we handle that. I mean, we don't want to stop a project in,
Agreed.
in midair, but I also don't want to have the added expense of having them put in the pole, run power and then turn around and, and take it all out and put it into a ground mounted.
But then again, the whole point of the regulation is so we don't have to have the overheads and the visuals and everything.
If it was an area that didn't already, wasn't already serviced with overhead poles, I think I'd, I'd be more inclined to, to look at it.
Okay.
Okay, that's all right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not a public hearing, right? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So that handles item eight on our agenda and we will move right into item five. Design review by consent. So we handle consent agenda items if you're looking at your, if you're looking at your agenda and following along. Items five A through five F will be, have been reviewed by, by the board, have been reviewed by staff and will be considered as, as a, as a whole. If anybody has any questions regarding any of those applications, if you could just make yourself known and we'll pull them off. If not, any member of the board wish to pull any off? Jeff, Suzanne?
No, go ahead.
I just have a question on five A, so I'd like to have, be able to discuss that one.
Okay, so we'll pull five A from the agenda, from the.
This probably has nothing to, to do with this, but I was looking at the minutes from design review and there was a concern about the new restaurant on Fort Eddy sign.
New restaurant on Fort Eddy sign.
Is that Fort Eddy? No, is that, that's.
You thinking Crumble?
Stores.
No, no.
Store Street.
The, the six oh-one, the two oh-one grill. Applyable. One-ten, one-ten grill.
Close fire.
Yeah, I know. I didn't want to say the number.
Yeah, that's not, that's not up for consent.
It's not, I, right, but is, are we looking at it?
No.
Not very now.
So, okay.
I think there is some discussion regarding it.
There's code enforcement actions ongoing with that.
Okay, that's, I'm just wondering where that was in the grant scheme.
Yeah, I think there's another one on, on next door, I believe.
Yes, there's two.
Right, Seventy Store Street.
Implicable.
Right, yeah, Verizon and then a bowl.
Oh, infinity, thank you.
Okay, so we'll pull item five A, so we're going to handle five B through F. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those subject to architectural design review comments in totality? So five, sorry, five B through five F.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we'll take five A. Madam Clerk, if we could read that into the record?
Erin Chandler, on behalf of Morrell Mill Pond LLC, requests ADR approval for alteration and relocation of a hundred and twenty-four point ninety-eight square foot internally illuminated freestanding sign at two Whitney Road in the industrial district.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, my question is related. Did the applicant provide a site plan showing where that sign is? Because I knew, weren't there right-of-way changes or slope changes out there as a result of the roundabout? So I'm wondering where they're proposing to put the sign back. Is it in the exact same location, just higher? Or is it in or out from the road?
I'm not, I was not actually at that meeting. Do you know if there was a site plan?
There is no site plan provided at the ADR meeting.
I mean, I know they presented a picture, but without knowing where that line is, I just want to make sure that they're not going to install a sign that ends up after the fact. We find out it's on city property and has to be moved again.
So this is done, I believe at the request of the city and I think Matt knows, this is based on the change in the right-of-way. Yep, yes. Open the public hearing.
So I was asking a good question.
So we'll open the public hearing. Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing and welcome this gentleman to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
I may, or I can. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Walsh. I'm the deputy city manager for development. The community development department is handling this particular sign as part of the off-site improvements for CIP thirty, which is the Hoyt Road Whitney Road intersection improvement, which the city's been building out there and we're very close to completing. There was a site plan that was part of the variance applications for the sign. Apparently it didn't make it to the planning board. The sign is located outside of the new right-of-way and easement area. It is essentially right behind where the current sign will be. It will be on the property, private property at two Whitney Road. But all those concerns that you mentioned have been accounted for in the placement.
And I'm good. I just want to make sure. I just didn't want to have to see it go in and then have code enforcement go out and have to have it be moved after the fact.
That would be the last thing we would want, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, any further discussion? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll look for an appro, we'll look for a motion from you.
I, motion to approve.
Motion, motion's been made. Do you have a second?
Second.
Then seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to the public hearing section of our agenda. Item six A, if we could read that into the record.
Jeff Davis, on behalf of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, requests ADR approval for replacement of a hundred and ninety-eight point two-six square foot internally illuminated wall sign, replacement of a forty point eight-three square foot inter, internally illuminated wall sign, a new sixty point seven-four square foot non-illuminated wall sign, replacement of an eighty square foot internally illuminated panels on a monument sign, a new twenty point six-seven square foot non-illuminated wall sign and a new twenty-six point six-seven square foot non-illuminated wall sign at three four four Loudon Road in Gateway Performance District. And there is reference there to a variance that was received to allow the number and maximum square footage of the signs.
I'm going to be glad that you read that into the record and not me, so.
Oh, additionally requesting, let me, I'm sorry, I apologize, approval for replacement of an eighty square foot internally illuminated panel on a freestanding sign. The reason it was pulled from consent was because they had forgotten that one and added last minute, so.
Okay, I was just going to say, what's the reason for consent?
Yeah, it's essentially the same as all the other signs. It was just ADR didn't actually see it, so we pulled it from consent.
And before I forget, Mr. Walsh, a big fan of the new permit format, the PDF format. Okay, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Jeff Davis.
Okay, so, sorry.
I'm with PB Two Architecture and Engineering from Rogers, Arkansas.
Rogers, Arkansas. He came all the way up just for this meeting.
Uh, this is my third time here.
No kidding?
Well, for.
White and snow.
Should, should we delay this until next time so you can come back?
I get air miles.
We just can't promise snow next time.
Yeah.
Well, welcome. Any, Heather, issues with this other than the fact that it missed the, missed the piece? So if you can just tell us about the piece that was missed, so we can make sure that there's no issues with that. Since ADR, we've already reviewed the ADR piece, which is architectural design review aspect of it, and then go from there.
The, well, actually I want to bring something to your attention is that the twenty point six-seven non-illuminated wall sign was removed as part of a condition of the ADR approval. So that sign, this is actually the grocery, not, no, sorry, not grocery, the outdoor sign is no longer on the plans.
Okay.
The roadside that was missed is along Sheep Davis Road and was not caught by whomever did the survey. As a matter of fact, when I was here for the ADR meeting, I went to the store and then decided to zip over to the Sam's Club and I looked up and it's like, oh, there's a sign.
Oops.
Where did this come from? Why is this not on the plans? So the plans are simple for the both road signs. Basically it's a fix-up, cleanup. We're going to change the faces in the road signs, do repairs for lighting. Any structural issues will be addressed, but the sign will remain the same. We're not going to change dimension, height, or anything like that.
Yeah, changing the faces, but they'll be basically the same. Okay?
That's correct.
Any questions for this applicant? Any member of the audience have any questions or concern about this application? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your time. Hopefully be quick with you. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve that application as submitted with the additional information regarding a sign on Sheep Davis Road?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item six B in our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Portsmouth Sign Company, on behalf of James S. Micawitz, Micawitz. I really wanted to try and so that was my attempt to say that name. Request ADR approval for a new twenty-two point three-four-three square foot internally illuminated wall sign at seventy-four Store Street in the Opportune Corridor Performance District. This was pulled from consent because ADR had questions and there was no one present to answer them.
Okay, is the applicant here? What did ADR have for questions, Heather?
The question first, why there wasn't a sign proposed at the west side of the building and with no representation, they wanted to wait.
Yep, good. Okay, welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Hi, I am Carrie Vaughn of Portsmouth Sign Company, representing the applicant.
And I'm Courtney Bizarian of Portsmouth Sign Company.
Great. So you heard him, I think you heard Alex mention that there was no sign, that ADR just had a question regarding why there wasn't a sign on one side of the building, I think the back side of the building, right?
The west side is.
Store Street front.
So the frontage side.
So this is an applicant for the frontage side, for the parking lot.
So the front of the building is technically Store Street.
Right, so it's the one over the entry door is where this is.
That's on the parking lot side. So we're looking for, we're looking for signage on the Store Street side, which is the street side. So two sides of the building, front and back.
Right, and so when we first came for this application and then it was that in that district we're only allowed for one wall-mounted sign.
Yeah.
So it was the, we had to go with the signage over the entry is where we were informed we were allowed to have the sign, was my understanding.
So I think we put in a variance to have two signs and then.
Exactly. There was an original application for a variance, which we've pulled and now we're only applying for the one sign that is conforming.
I actually did not realize that is why, that your application was pulled. The, so we actually went to great lengths to ensure that all of these buildings had entrances on to Store Street. It was part of the planning board approval for the entire development. So there should not only be a sign there, but there should be an entrance there. So I'm not entirely sure how you got a building permit to not put a door on the Store Street side.
There's entrances on both sides.
But they don't want to put a sign there? Or do you need a variance?
We, exactly. We were denied the variance because they were asking for two signs. So it was to.
They decide, they deny the variance.
The, the first variance was applied, had a couple different elements to it. It was two signs and those were over on square footage. So at the meeting there, they said, apply for one sign and make it the allowed square footage and then we will, if you want to continue through the variance process, you can.
Okay.
It was then made, I mean, we're just the sign company representing, so it was their call to only apply for one conforming sign.
So was another option to do two signs that were smaller?
Not that would, I mean, because you're only allowed one linear foot per storefrontage. So there, that would be twenty-three square feet of signage and to split that into two exactly yippy tiny expansivities. So, so I guess I would suggest that they try to get the variance for the second sign. Because to require them to put entrances on both sides and not allow them to put signage on both sides. That's my first hearing of that.
Especially considering like one-ten has signs on both sides. Currently.
All right. Oh, Carol.
So my question is, could temporarily, could they put the sign on the front and then on the back put a sign that's in the door?
But, yeah, I, I apologize for bringing up, I didn't realize what, what's before us right now is one sign. So what we should do is just approve that sign and then follow up, you know, with staff later. We're not going to solve that problem here tonight.
So they're going to, they're going to go on the back side?
No, no, they can put up their sign.
Because we're going to want one.
Exactly. If you can approve this one sign, we will talk to them about going for a variance to get the second.
So which side is this sign going to be on then?
The parking lot side.
Parking lot side for the, for the start.
That's what they've applied for.
That's what they've applied for.
Yeah.
But we do want one on the other side.
Yeah.
They want one on the other side.
Exactly. They would love one too.
Good, make everybody happy.
But size-wise, this, I mean.
So I guess that is where like if.
How big is, how big is the one you, sorry, do interrupt. How big is the one?
Twenty-two point.
Twenty-two point three.
Twenty-two point three, which is your limit.
Pretty much.
Exactly. So.
How big is that? Just give me its length.
Eight.
Five feet?
Eight feet.
Do you have the one next?
Eight foot one by two foot nine. Yeah, eight one by two nine.
Thank you.
One and a half by two nine.
And that's like.
These panels are two by two.
Yeah. Yeah.
That helps.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So any concerns or questions regarding approving this sign? With the understanding that we do want a sign on the other side, but we can handle that as a separate, as a separate piece.
Discussion with CBA.
Yeah, okay. Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? You're all not here for that? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the sign as submitted? No mention of a second sign because that's going to come as a second piece.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Sorry for the confusion.
Nope, that's.
No worries.
The two entrance thing is screwing us up a little bit, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Succeed in our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Will Cox and Barton request an extension of ADR approval granted by the planning board on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for the renovation of the building at ten Pleasant Street Extension in the Central Business Performance District. This was renovation of that, it triggered the review because they had to do some sidewalk improvements, some access and repairs, which triggered the requirement for a building permit. So if it weren't for those repairs, it wouldn't have come before you. But, so they do need a renewal of the, the building permit in Performance District for ADR approval.
Okay, so there is a public hearing and we don't need the applicant, but any questions regarding this? Nope? So we'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make, any discussion? Or would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver, the extension waiver is outlined, the extension, sorry.
Second.
Grant the extension is outlined. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moves us right on to eight D in the agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Six D.
Six D, sorry.
Is Daniel Brennan?
Hopefully fishing.
Daniel Brennan, on behalf of PR Restaurants, Panera Bread, requests ADR approval for construction of a new enclosed exterior seating patio, a new exterior cooler and replacement of existing signage at seventy-five Fort Eddy Road in the Gateway Performance District. This is originally approved over a year ago. It's the same plan, it's the same request. I believe ADR had recommended an awning of some sort over the cooler and Mr. Brennan asked for it to be pulled from consent because he's not in agreement with that.
Okay.
Condition.
All right. If you could just state your name for the record?
Dan Brennan.
Okay, Dan. Welcome to the table. Tell us what the issue is with the.
At the hearing, we have a shroud going around the HVAC unit and then they wanted us to angle that shroud to match the overhang angle. When I was here, I wasn't really considering it. Give you a little history. When we got approved the first time, we were painting the HVAC unit to match the storefront, the break metal and the overhang. And then it was suggested that we put a shroud. Because the roof is so small, you have to service the unit. We custom, custom build a shroud that faces directly to the unit, which works. And then when they asked us to angle it at the, at the February twenty-eighth hearing, I said, ah, I guess we can do that. And not putting pen to paper, it would be almost impossible to service it if we were to do that. So I'd like to remove that suggestion.
Okay, so the, the suggestion to put the shroud on is not going to be removed, but the suggestion to angle it in is going to be removed. Okay, I got you. Questions or concerns regarding this? Anybody? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns? I don't think it's a big, big deal, but we'll ask. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a motion to approve it as submitted, striking the, the, striking the, I'll close the public hearing, have to close the public hearing first, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve as submitted and strike the requirement to angle the shroud?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. See how simple that was?
You guys, it's so fast.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. We'll move on. Stick around. See how fast we go. So that moves us on to site plan subdivisions and conditional use permit applications, item seven A. If we could read that into the record?
Jeff McGuire, on behalf of DSM MB Two LLC, requests major site plan approval to allow a change of use from service commercial to restaurant at ninety-eight Fort Eddy Road in Gateway Performance District. This triggered a major site plan approval. Because of the change in the use, ended up triggering the, the traffic trips generated from the previous, from the proposed use exceeded the previous use enough that it triggered the, the plan review. We allowed, we are supporting a number of waivers because we actually have the entire full plan set on file for this. full plan set on file for this development, they're not proposing any development, they're not proposing any changes, they, we asked them to do a tra, a traffic memo, just to acknowledge or verify that the trips are not gonna cause any traffic concerns, which they've done, so this is essentially a, a change of use, which we normally wouldn't even require.
But triggers a major site plan.
Yeah, right, which is what, oh, so.
Lucky, lucky you.
So the first, so the first waiver that we supported was to allow the determination of completeness, staff does recommend that the, the application be determined complete, so you do need to make this motion before you open the public hearing.
Okay.
And not regional impact?
Recommend the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and we also recommend that you grant the waiver that was requested from section 6.01 subsection three, to hold the public hearing at the same meeting as the determination of completeness.
Okay, so we have a determination of completeness component, staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and would like to waive section 601 dash three to have the public heari, oh, 601 is it?
6.01 subsection three, correct.
Subsection three to have the public hearing the same night as the determination of completeness. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a public hearing, and, and open the, not a development of regional impact and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion has been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names for the record.
Good evening, my name's Nick Golan, I'm a licensed engineer and principal of TF Moran.
James McGuire, one of the owners of Crumble Cookies, that's coming in Fort Eddie.
Okay, well, most importantly, tell us a little bit about Crumble Cookies, if you can, very intrigued, very intrigued.
I could be here all night.
I'll give you 30 seconds to tell us what Crumble Cookies is.
I'm somewhat shocked that you didn't take advantage of this opportunity to provide samples to the planning board.
You guys are on private.
We discussed this coming in and we apologize.
Samples would, would make it through.
Forget Crumble, forget Crumble for a second, if I can just say, so I live in Southern New Hampshire, Pelham, New Hampshire, I have never seen, I've been through some variances in my own town, I have never seen a planning board move so quickly than you guys, so you should be applauded.
Stick around.
Yes.
It makes me want to slow this down.
Stick around with me, stick around with Nick.
I did not put him up to this.
You guys should be applauded for how quickly you get through stuff, so.
We appreciate that, but I still don't like cookies.
Yeah, so gourmet cookies, made from scratch, we're really excited, we have five locations in New England, four in New Hampshire, Concord would be the fifth, one coming in Vermont, and then Maine, so we live local, we love providing business jobs, opportunities for people, we're excited for Concord, so.
Well, unfortunately, your, your business triggered a couple of things that it normally wouldn't trigger, so fortunately, unfortunately, we're doing it right, so, Nick, give us a quick overview if you can on.
Yeah, relative to the application, I don't want to take anything for whatever to say, the reality is a change of use site plan, there's no site-related issues that are changing, we did evaluate traffic to make sure that box was appropriately checked, there's no discernible difference relative to the traffic that would be generated by this proposed use.
And what, what slot is it in? Where is it?
Unit C.
Yeah, it's the old New Hampshire Liquor Store.
New Hampshire Liquor Store.
Or right, I'm sorry, right next to the New Hampshire Liquor Store.
Which is the.
There was a restaurant in there.
Former dry cleaners.
Dry cleaners.
So the Mexican, there's a Mexican restaurant?
Correct.
And then us.
And then you.
It used to be the old radio shack.
Nail salon.
And then.
Nail salon, nail salon, how could anyone know that? Oh, how could I?
Grab a cookie and then get your nails done.
And then buy a fix.
What order you said she is?
What, the liquor store?
We can't.
Okay, there's no liquor store.
Oh, that's right, oh, that's right.
Any concerns from, from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope, other than Crumble Cookies? Okay, Heather, what is my piece here, it's just to grant the waiver request, is that it?
Close the, close the public hearing.
And grant, grant major site plan, okay, we'll close the public hearing, move on to signage?
Oh, yes, correct, thank you, did we not include that in the, so the other, well, let's do the site plan first, and then we can tackle this.
Okay, so 2.1 in your packets is to grant the waiver request for section 16, application requirements for a major site plan, to not provide a plan set using the criteria of RSA 674443EIE1, and would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, 2.2 is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed restaurant use at 94 to 108 Fort Eddie Road, is that right? 94 to 108?
Correct.
Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, let's talk about sign.
Yep, so they had a change in their sign from ADR, and rather than go through ADR, we had them just bring, bring this back to you, so they flipped the lettering from being white with a black outline to simply black.
So in your packets, it's under the supplemental?
Yep.
Tab, so you flipped the sign from black text to black stroke and white fill?
Correct.
Okay, any concerns, questions, comments regarding that? No public hearings, so we will take a motion to approve that sign as outlined, if someone like to make a mo, make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, she signs good, everything's rolling, you're ready to go. Good luck, when do you open?
Uh, we're hoping for like, beginning of June-ish, so.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, we're, we're excited, thank you guys.
Good, welcome to Concord.
They did, yeah. I put this on a sheet.
Okay, that's item seven A, let's move on to seven B in our agenda, if we could.
North Point Engineering, on behalf of the City of Concord and United Therapeutics, requests major site plan approval for construction of an approximate 35,000 square foot aircraft hangar and a conditional use permit to allow a 20-foot wide driveway, where 24-foot wide driveway is other required at 34 Regional Drive in Industrial District. This application was previously determined complete, and staff recommends that you open the public hearing.
Okay, we will open the public hearing, let's get a quick staff update if we can.
Sure. Sorry, we came up so quickly, I wasn't prepared for that.
Seems to be a common theme tonight, let's knock on wood when you say that, so.
Yep, so they are still working through some stuff, we, there was some notes in our staff reports about we were waiting for a third-party review for both water and the airport, we heard from the Jacobs Engineering, who was reviewing for the runway out there, that most of their comments have been addressed, we haven't received a revised letter from them, but they feel comfortable with conditional approval, and same with the water service, so there are some things that I know this has been a work in progress, things have changed as we've reviewed it, but at this point, we feel comfortable conditionally approving just some items that'll need to be addressed as we move forward.
Okay, and they, and they're outlined, the conditions?
Yep.
Are outlined, okay.
Yep.
Okay, welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names for the record.
Yeah, sure, my name is Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering, I'm a principal engineer at North Point, just for the record also, I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission here in, in Concord, but I'm, I'm not here in that capacity tonight, I'm here in my professional capacity, representing the, the applicant, I'm gonna filibuster for about 10 more seconds because you guys are running way too fast and, and we're not fully here, we left a space open right over there. Evan Heron is gonna be joining us, he's from Silver Maple Construction, he's the, the construction manager who's representing United Therapeutics in their effort to bring the hangar to the site, so he'll be joining us momentarily, we're gonna lead off with him to do a, just overview of what they're about, what they're trying to do, and then turn over Jason LaCombe from S&amp;P Architecture, who's, who's right here with me to walk through the building, so maybe we'll jump right to you first and, and then go to, you wanna do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're gonna wing it for you, so.
That's great.
You want me to open up your?
The only thing better is having technical difficulties too.
No, we don't have technical difficulties, you want your video?
Yeah, so what, we put together a, a very conceptual video flyover of the proposed building, we showed this at ADR, there have been some minor changes, but in concept, this is the building that we're proposing to construct, it is just under a 36,000 square foot hangar, so it's considered a group two hangar, we did receive the variance for height a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, so as you can see, we, we tried to do large simple graphic on the building, how do you dress up a hangar that has no windows, has really very little fenestration, it is primarily a parking spot for the aircrafts. Inside, there are some lounge spaces and support spaces for layovers during, during flights, where the pilots and the crew can, can relax a little bit, that's all on the south-facing side, there is a small garage on the inside for, for personal automobiles, as well as parking on the exterior, so relatively simple, there are a couple of unique items that we've integrated into this design, one is, this is actually gonna be a mass timber structure, so we have a timber truss that's spanning roughly 210 feet across, in what's, yeah, in what's really considered a hybrid teardrop truss, but the structure is primarily timber, that's actually being fabricated out of a company up in Canada right now. The second part is, we've integrated a floor drainage system, and this will be the first one on the east coast, and what this allowed us to do was to meet the fire protection requirements without using the foam generators that have all the PFAS and the, and the chemicals, so that was really an important piece that we've worked with the, the manufacturer of that system and United Therapeutics to really integrate that new technology, so we can get away from having some of the toxic chemicals in there, so they're really interested in doing, doing the right thing and being responsible to the environment while building this building.
Well, this will be the prettiest one over there, so you're gonna, you know.
That's a bar high.
Could be the start of the, the new neighborhood.
We hope.
It's beautiful, it's a beautiful looking building.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna open up, just to kind of take a step back, just to make sure everyone is familiar with what we're talking about over here, I'm gonna try to zoom in on that. So it's obviously at the airport, which is a big parcel of land, this will be a leased parcel that the city will be leasing to United Therapeutics, and I believe that lease go through on, so lease, I think, just went up, went through our city council meeting on Monday, so that's been approved. So this is the small, the small leased parcel, it's about just under three acres, it's up here in the northern section of the airport, this is the, this is the National Guard Building right over here, which is right off of Regional Drive, and then these are the, the commercial buildings in Chanel Drive right here, so we're tucked into this, this north section of the airport, there is a small, existing private hangar just to the north of us right there, zoom in here a little bit, you can see the aerial, so that's the National Guard facility over there, there's a small private hangar here, and then, and this is the parcel we're, we're looking to develop, so it is undeveloped right now, it is right along this taxiway, which is, which is an abandoned runway, the abandoned northerly one runway of the airport, so we will have direct access onto the runway, access to the site is via this city driveway that comes down off of Regional Drive here, it is gated right here, it comes back down in here and actually goes right through the western side of the, this private hangar, there's a 20-foot wide easement right here in a paved drive that provides access to, to this proposed site, so that's it, it's, it's up on the heights at the airport, it's a relatively flat site, as we're all familiar with, obviously, the airport's there, so it's pretty straightforward from our perspective of site design, we do have some interesting aspects to this, one, it is a, it is a private development, it is private infrastructure that's being constructed on city-owned property, so we are, the city is looking at it from, from the perspective of, I guess, from that perspective, so making sure that we are using all city construction standards, as if this was municipal infrastructure out there, so that's some of the comments we have, we've worked through with engineering on the site design, but I think we're, we're in good shape as far as that goes, we are extending some municipal utilities, water and sewer to this building that exists over here, on this site plan, we've obviously rotated the drawing so that north is pointed up, so there's the existing private hangar right here, and we'll be coming in through their existing paved access road right here, so that is the primary access to the site for vehicular traffic, which we do expect to be very minimal here, I mean, we're talking, you know, less than one trip per day probably, there'll only be activity there when there is a reason for people to be flying in and out, so very low intense use, we are proposing to extend that drive along the westwardly side of the site, to provide access to the, the main door and garage door, which will be over on this side of the southerly side of the building, and also to potentially leave access for a future structure, which may, there's nothing planned right now, but they do, they do have the ability to, to utilize this land as part of their lease, so they may be looking to add a future structure, structure in the, in the future, that would be obviously backed before the planning board if that were to happen, so that, that's really the site circulation, just a small park along on the south side, and then on the front, or on the, the east side of the building, they'll have a paved apron that goes out to the existing taxiway, so it's a relatively straightforward site plan from that perspective, we are extending the water and sewer utilities up within this private drive, as well as underground electric and gas within that, within that drive, so we do have a little bit of constraints up here, going through the, the narrow driveway in front of the existing hangar, private hangar over here, we'll pretty much be ripping up all that pavement to extend utilities through there, so we're gonna work with, with those folks, they've expressed some drainage concerns that they have at that end of the building, so we're gonna try to resolve some of those as part of our grading plans, since we'll be ripping, ripping up a lot of that pavement, I'm not sure if they're, they're here tonight, but we have had a couple of good, good meetings and discussions with them, I know that they were supportive when we were at the zoning board of our height variance, so let me just flip through here, so.
What, what type of drainage concerns do they have? Runoff concerns?
Well, they, yeah, they have a situation, it's a little unique over there, their paving was, was done poorly, they have some paving around the edge of their building that's actually higher than the threshold elevations of their, at their doors, so they get water in their building, in the building up there, that north end, so since we're ripping up the pavement, we're, we're gonna try to lower the grade around that north end a little bit, and just make, make sure that they have positive drainage away from, away from the building.
Is that an active hangar?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the only real use out there on that taxiway right now, but they do use it, I mean, I'd say there's probably daily use out there. So, so our site plan, we've submitted the site plan, we have a stormwater management and grading and drainage plan, our, our plan up here is to infiltrate stormwater runoff, we have well, you know, well-drained soil up there at the airport, there's not a lot of opportunity for, to discharge from this site, there's not, currently not a lot of runoff from that site, so we're planning to capture every, all of the runoff from the impervious area and get it back into the ground, so we've sized our detention basins for 100-year storm events, so that we're not, we don't have any discharge from the site that would otherwise affect the airport infrastructure. One of the things we are continuing to work with the city on is improvements that need to be done to the abandoned runway out here, which is now a taxiway, it is a, it is a very wide paved, you know, which was a runway, but it's now a taxiway, so it does need to have some resurfacing done out there for the jet, the Gulfstream jet that they're proposing to have in this hangar, so we're, we have a, a plan for improvements to that, and there's still some, some, some work to do on that, that's just kind of technical, that we're hoping to address as, as conditions of approval. So tho, those are kind of the, the constraints on this site, is just getting the utilities in here, getting that runway, final design done, working it out with, with engineering. Couple things I did want to mention, we do have, we did, we do have a, a landscape plan we've submitted with this, it's a min, it's a minimal landscape plan up at the airport, obviously, we do have some, some concerns with species to use up there, I know planning has, has some comments on that we need to address, we do expect to have some comments from, from fishing game up there as well, because there's a lot of history up there with carner blue butterfly, and making sure we have appropriate habitat up there, so we are planning to address those comments as well. Trash removal, I'm sure somebody is noticing there's not a dumpster on here. So I get, trash removal is, is handled by the airport up there.
I just said that to me. She said, "There's no dumpster on the plan." That's not your person waiting, is it?
Is it? Is he there?
It is.
Come on up. Don't be shy. I'm taking as long as I can, but there's a long agenda.
I've been there for like 15 minutes.
Sorry about that.
We're handing it off to you next. You're almost up, Evan. Don't worry about it.
Doug picked a bad night to not want to come in, so, sorry about that.
They were also very efficient.
So I'm gonna wrap up real quick. But I mentioned trash removal, so I gotta address anything. The airport handles trash removals, my understanding here, so that'll, they'll come around and, and remove the trash. So there is not a need for a, for a separate dumpster trash removal on the site.
The storage inside the building.
Right, there'll be storage inside the building for that, yeah. We do have a couple of last things. We do have a conditional use permit request. We don't, we don't have any waivers, but we do have a CUP request for a reduced width to the driveway. And that pertains to this driveway on the west side of the building. We are proposing that to be 20 feet wide. The normal city requirements are 24 feet wide. We've requested a reduction of that just because we, we don't feel like we need the 24 feet. It's very low, low use. The, the board, you folks do have the ability to grant that CUP if we have less than 35 trips per day average, average daily traffic, which we definitely do on this site. We're also accessing it via this 18-foot wide driveway here. So we'd like to just put in the minimum, which is 20 feet, which is what's needed for fire lane. So that's where we come up with that. So we've submitted that request and I believe we've addressed the criteria for the CUP. I won't go through those, that criteria unless there's questions on it. We do have an alteration of terrain permit pending for this. So we have a DES permit. We have a FAA obstruction evaluation permit that we required for this. And we will need coverage under the EPA's construction general permit for construction starts. That's about it. I'm not gonna steal your thunder, so I'm gonna turn it over to Evan. So Jason gave his talk of the building.
Yep. Just, let me just ask you a couple of questions first, Jeff. So you mentioned a couple of things that beat a couple of questions. So this is a development of regional impact, I imagine?
Yes, it is, yes.
No issues from anybody else? Accessing fences or security? Is it, is it an accessible drive right off Regional Drive and drive right up the building?
No, there's a ga- there's a gate off of Regional Drive, yeah.
All right. And then any, any, it doesn't seem like it would be an issue, but I, we obviously look at things like ADA accessibility and parking and things like that when any of these plans come up. So I, I don't know if there's any requirements or if there's any waivers that are involved in that, but.
No, we have ADA accessible parking space right at the front entrance, right, right there. So we were meeting ADA requirements.
Didn't see it on the plan, so it might have, okay. So sorry, that's the couple that I had.
So just to set you up, we talked about, we haven't talked about United Therapeutics or anything, so.
Let me just, one more question.
Just can you check with fire, fire department with regard to emergency access, given that you're going for the narrower access road?
Yeah, my understa- yeah, fires reviewed this.
Yep, yeah, the fire notified us that they were okay with that.
Thank you.
Now we can see you out.
Perfect. So, so I'm Evan Heron with Silver Maple Construction. I'm the design builder here. And so we are, the three of us obviously are representing United Therapeutics. And the, the purpose of this hangar is, you know, right now they have a, a strong presence in the southeast of the United States, and that's obviously growing in the northeast. And, and they've chosen Concord as a, as a great strategic spot to build this hangar as one of the, their main hubs in New England, especially for this, this Gulfstream that will fly their executives around, their clients around, et cetera. So they're really trying to make this a, a showpiece, which, which we think is pretty neat. A lot of the stuff that we've done in this building has actually been above and beyond what code requires, just because UT requires us to build to FM global standards, which means a lot of things that we've had to work through have been very complex or challenging or not typical details. And we've gotten a lot of help from, from people at Concord in, in designing some of those details. So I think the goal of tonight is to kind of answer any questions that you all might have and to kind of keep the momentum going forward and, and get this going as quickly as possible.
Great. It's a beautiful building. Questions on the board, Jeff?
Yeah, you mentioned parking, because you kind of got me thinking. Generally, how many cars are gonna be parked here? You said there's not a lot of trips per day, but I'm thinking that people are taking the plane. Either somebody's parking there, the pilot's parking there, something's happening. Is there enough space for the intended? Is it just one plane? Is it multiple planes can be stored there?
You want to answer, I think that, I think there's more than enough parking there.
Yeah, I would agree.
Pilot's gonna be parked there. I mean, a lot of the flying that's coming out here is corporate jet coming in and helicopter going out, right?
Right.
So why don't you answer that a little bit?
Yeah, so I think, so it'll have the, the G600. It'll have the Bell B429. This here is CVJ, and then the Pilatus PC12. So there's gonna be a couple of planes in there besides the G600. And I think in terms of flying in, like, I mean, for corporate travel, you know, you fly in, you have a car waiting. You take the car to your meetings and then, and then, you know, the car drops you off and it's gone. So I think the only cars that will be there on a, on a daily basis might be, you know, anybody that's cleaning the building or any staff, so maybe one or two cars.
Okay.
Yep.
If I could follow up just one more. The only other question I had, you said this is an actual separate lot? Because I noticed on the north side on your lighting plan, you have quite a bit of spillover from your wall packs into the adjacent lot. And we try to minimize spillover into adjacent properties.
There's a, it's a, it's a leased parcel, so it's all part of the airport parcel, so the city.
So it's not a separate lot per se?
That's my understanding, is it's a leased parcel, right?
Right, it doesn't meet that definition of a separate lot.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't suddenly gonna have somebody else complaining after it's built that there's a whole lot of light in their yard.
Counselor.
Thanks, just as a follow-up to Jeff's question. Based on my reading of the plans and based on what you said a moment ago, I believe there's a two-car garage also?
There is.
So there's additional parking in the building?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay, thank you.
That's where they keep the nice cars that go with the G600.
Yeah, I know. I've been picked up and dropped off at those places, so.
Suzanne.
Yeah, I have that question for Heather. How many, I've noticed that the trees that they've provided are all ornamentals.
It's at the request of the airport.
Okay.
We, it's.
Why?
They actually don't want any trees out there.
But they're building, they gotta, they gotta height variance to make it higher. What would the difference be?
But they, they don't trigger the landscaping requirements anyways?
Oh, they don't?
Nope.
Oh.
So they're providing more landscaping than is required, because they don't.
I would suggest that they did care about the pollinators, that they probably get natives. I mean, even with their shrubs, that you go for the natives and boxwoods not really hardy. And a lot of the Japanese maples aren't really hardy. So just FYI, just if you can't have anything of any substantial height, get a shrub.
Something the carner blues like?
Well, it's something that's native.
Yeah.
But it can't attract too many birds. We're working with Heidi Holman at Fishing Game, trying to come up with a plan that works for safety as well as for.
Can't attract birds, huh? Think of that.
Well, then you, I mean, they've got flowering. Yeah, I mean, that's, it's gonna be hard to attract a lot of birds with limited landscaping anyway. So I wouldn't worry about that, but I think that they should be more directed towards the natives. And if you can't plant a tree, plant a big shrub. I don't know what to tell you, but.
Any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Nope? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful building.
It's very nice looking.
Well done. So in your packets, we have.
Did you sign in?
And 4.1 is to grant architectural design review approval for the plan and building as submitted. Would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we've got 4.2 is to grant the conditional use permit CUP per section 28, 7, 11G of the zoning ordinance to allow for the construction of a 20-foot-wide driveway entrance where a 24-foot-wide driveway is required. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 4.3 is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a new 35,683-square-foot private airplane hangar, aircraft hangar, associated parking, paved access, landscaping, drainage, utilities, and upgraded runway of 34th Regional Drive. Subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 5 and subsequent conditions 1 through 6. Anything else to add? Beth, are we good?
Nope, we're good.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item 7C in our agenda if we could.
Andy Sanborn, on behalf of Big Step LLC, requests major site plan approval to construct a charitable gaming hall, restaurant, and microbrewery along with a conditional use permit approval for disturbance of wetland buffers at 7 Break-A-Day Drive in the Gateway Performance District. Would you like, this was continued from last month's public hearing. Would you like an update?
We could get an update, yep.
So the main issues that last month while we recommended to continue were concerns about public safety. And the interim staff has met with adjacent municipalities as well, as well as CNHRPC. We do have two memos that were produced by the police chief and the fire chief, which are in your packets. And I believe someone from each department is here tonight to provide testimony if you have questions. The main issues that we, that we have left to, are, excuse me, the main issues we have left to resolve are, do pertain to questions that, that we feel remain about impacts from municipal, on municipal services. We haven't heard back from the water study, the consultant that's working on the water study. However, that's something that we were comfortable viewing as a condition of approval, having that finished up as a condition of approval. We've been slowly working our way through resolving the issues pertaining to the traffic study. I will let Nick give a, a short summary on where we're at, what's resulted from the traffic study. ADR had some pretty significant recommendations. They did want them to come back to ADR. They didn't want to hold up the process, so their recommendation was coming back as a, you know, as a condition of approval. But the comments that they had were significant enough that the building may end up looking nothing like what is in the packet. I feel that they should go back to ADR with their revisions before they get their approval so that the board can actually see what the building may, will actually look like. So ADR, the municipal impacts, those are the main issues. Hold on, let me go to my conditions. I think there was one more. Well, traffic. So we weren't sure what the off-site improvements should be previously. We do now know what the off-site improvements should be, and we can evaluate those. We still do have to sort of review the plans in accordance with the, with the off-site improvements that are gonna be there. We haven't had a chance to do that yet. So there's some engineering technical issues that we, we just have to sort through. So those are, those are the main issues that we have. I will let Nick do a more full summary if he chooses.
Okay. Welcome to the table. You guys could state your names for the record.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planner Shank, and members of the board. My name is John Cronin. I'm an attorney from Manchester, representing the applicant this evening. As you probably know, Nick Goland, the project engineer, is with us. And also Robert Duvall from TF Moran, who's been working on the traffic. Initially, I think the most recent staff report talked about potentially tabling this case, but we appreciate the time that we can take to try and identify what lingering issues are out there so that we can be prepared for next meeting and have everything done that needs to be done so that you have all the information that you need to hopefully vote on this. I think the statements about where we're at are, are accurate. There's been some recent developments just, just today, in the last few days, finishing up that traffic study, but probably not prepared to go into it in, in full length today unless you want. We probably can address it, but if not, we can carry it over. And the hope would be to minimize those things that we have to tackle at the next meeting so that we can capture them all. There's been progress with water. Numbers are looking good, but recognize that that has to be finalized and given to you. And Nick will talk a little too about the architecturals and where that's at. There's a positive meeting with the committee and, you know, a willingness and an expression of going back to give them the final details so that they know what the building will actually look like. I guess one of the things that we were hoping we could get some clarity on, and I think it's posed in the staff report as a question, as to what, I guess it would be a municipal services impact or commissioning a study. I've heard about them before, but I'm generally not familiar with them. I don't know how frequently you do them in, in Concord and in Manchester where I am most of the time. I haven't seen one done, but just want to get some feedback, exactly what you're looking for, and maybe some of the experts that you've worked with before in doing this, that you trust and have credibility so that if we're asked to do that, we know who to talk to and what exact information you're looking for and what opinions you're seeking. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick. He can give you a little bit more site-specific. I recognize it's always hard to follow a G600 in a, a jet hangar, but we'll let Nick tackle his civil engineering.
I'll do it.
And cookies.
I thought I led strong with the cookies, and we'll hopefully finish the night strong as well. One of the things that was mentioned by Heather was relative to ADR. We have since updated the plans to be reflective of their requests. We felt the ADR meeting went actually quite well relative to the comments. I thought they were excellent. They provided really the framework for us to really have some, some fun and animated discussion about how else we could spruce up this building, one of which included a potential mural. When we look at the east elevation of the proposed building, you can see there are some additional windows that have been added that are really reflective of the southerly elevation. So trying to be more consistent with that window placement, the width of the windows. The comments in our minds were fairly straightforward, but the idea of this mural was really, really the big-ticket item to figure out. How could we really make this building more attractive? The expectation is that that would be addressed as part of our signage package. So that's something to come. But with our follow-ups submitted to ADR, the intent would be to show this would be the placement. These are some general ideas to make sure that we've made the corrections that which they've requested. Similarly, on the back of the building, again, it was just adding some more industrial penetrations to again be in keeping with the overall idea. So I think this drawing is very similar to what we had previously proposed, but with some really nice enhancements. So I want to make sure you had the opportunity to really see what these revised elevations were gonna look like. And an acknowledgement of where that potential mural element would be located. Now, relative to a couple of other things that we had had the opportunity to talk about, the off-site improvements was one. Heather mentioned it in the opening, that we do have clarity now as to what those improvements will be. I'll hand it over to Bob momentarily to talk about really what the results of the VHB review of the traffic study were. So we've talked a little bit about ADR. John had mentioned the discussion of police and fire. I know we have some folks in the audience that may want to speak to those elements. We had to also reach out to the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. We had the opportunity to sit in with the fine folks in Pembroke just to make sure that all of their comments, their concerns have been appropriately addressed. And I'm happy to report that that is the case, and there are no outstanding comments with those individuals. The other outstanding item, really two items I would say we had, one was the request for a evaluation of water availability. Our fire protection engineer, our MEP folks, have provided the data that we think says this is, this development can be served. Engineering has said that they'd be happy to address that as a condition of approval and/or something that could be addressed as part of a building permit typically when you would see that level of evaluation being provided. But if there's an unknown issue within the municipal water supply system, and this would somehow adversely affect it, then we know we would have to rectify what we need to on our site. And the applicant has already committed to that. So we look at that and feel that that area is very much resolved. Which really leads me to our engineering review. So we had the opportunity to go back and forth as to what some of those comments are. Understood from a staffing standpoint, only so much can be done in the allotted amount of time between meetings. I looked through where we left off, pose A, as far as the remaining comments. I, I don't see any big deal breakers there. A lot of them I think are really just clarifications to make sure that TF Moran has modeled elements of our stormwater management system or the off-site improvements consistent with the city expectations. I was very hopeful that I could hand you our alteration of terrain permit, so anything stormwater-related could be absolved for this evening. But they aren't quite finished their secondary review, but we would expect to have that permit in short order. So when I look at those elements, I think those are pertinent to, to get out there. I think in large part, those are addressed, which really leaves this question of traffic. And Bob, if you wouldn't mind just expanding a little bit on the review memo we received this afternoon and if there are some clean-cut answers to any of those, those questions.
Thank you, Nick and members of the board. My name is Bob Duvall with TF Moran. I did the traffic study for this project. And the last time we talked about the traffic study, and I pointed out it's basically a pretty benign traffic study. The project shows very minimal impacts to all study area intersections. And we looked at eight intersections. And in every case, there were no significant level of service drops. The delay in queuing was, effects were minimal. And maybe most significantly, even after the project is built in future year, and even looking at the full-built case, which we did as a sensitivity analysis for this board, almost every intersection showed very little difference between no build and build. And then every intersection showed at least 25% and as much as 50% reserve capacity after the building of this project, including full-built in future year. So I find that these results are, are very encouraging, and the traffic impacts are, are, as I said, relatively minor. And basically, the traffic impacts are confined, as we discussed last time, to Loudoun Road at Break-A-Day and the 393 ramps. The 393 ramps work very effectively and have favorable levels of service and minimal delays. Most of our discussion last time focused on the left turns coming out of Break-A-Day Drive. And at the time, we hadn't had, we didn't have the data needed to conclusively complete the signal warrant analysis. So we went back, we got the additional information, and we've done that signal warrant analysis. And just today, we were handed VHB's review of that. And they agree with us that the signal is warranted in the Phase 1, the old conditions. In fact, it's, it's warranted in, in current conditions. And we are therefore proposing a signal at Break-A-Day Drive in, with Phase 1. So that resolves the questions of left turns. They would be operating under signal control. The signal operates very favorably. Level of service B across the board. So VHB, by the way, does agree with that analysis and supports the signal as the appropriate mitigation. In general, they supported all of the additional work that we provided on top of the. In general, they supported all of the additional work that we provided on top of the traffic study. And they came up with three additional comments that they're asking for some more information from us. And one of them is just providing a little more detail on the site distance of all study area intersections. So this is something that's in the regulations and we did comment that it appeared to be adequate at all these intersections, but they're asking that we verify that the distances at these existing intersections are adequate. So mind you, this is nothing we're proposing. They're just saying at DeMonte Drive, at Walmart, at Old and Loudon Road, at the three ninety-three ramps, is there adequate site distance? So we're going to take a more in-depth look at that to to show that this relatively straight section of road does in fact have adequate site distance to answer that comment. The second thing was to show that trucks in the signalized intersection can a right-turning truck heading west on Loudon Road can turn at the same time that an exiting left-turning truck out of break of day without interfering with each other. And actually, just before we received this comment, Nick had provided those truck turning plans to the consultants. So we haven't seen the review, but we are satisfied that it works and we provided the turning templates to show that it works.
I can even offer a clarification. It was just an oops that they didn't end up with the plan. So they were included in the planning board packet. They had the turning movement plans. It was just unfortunate just they missed that those sheets were included in the plan set. So our expectation would be that it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, and third comment was a question relative to the peak hour of the generator versus the roadway peak. We had evaluated in the PM peak hour in response to a prior comment, making sure that the traffic condition that we analyzed was the worst-case traffic condition. And to make or to determine how that happens, the peak hour of traffic, in this case, is the four to five hour on Loudon Road in on one oh six. And yet, the peak hour of the generator of the charitable gaming facility is typically six to seven, according to IT. So the question is, in evaluating the peak hour of roadway traffic, are you actually cap capturing the most total traffic on the road? And that would be the sum of existing background traffic at the roadway peak hour plus the trips generated by the facility at the roadway peak hour, four to five. And then compare that to the total amount of traffic, obviously less on the roadway, six to seven, and add to that the traffic generated by the gaming facility.
You completely lost us here. We need to
Let's just focus on the point, which is they ask you for the Saturday data and you will provide it.
We will provide it.
That's all we need to know.
Further questions?
Just for the questions, I know we have at least one board member that'll be happy to offer them. So that's really the traffic component. The only other element that really was of substance, we thought was something we discussed closer to the end of the last meeting, which had to do with site distances and site views. We did provide some additional elevations to provide clarity on site views from three ninety-three. I know the board has already had these in their packets and the opportunity to review. Actually, Jeff, this is one of the things you and I were talking about, was making sure that the representation of the photograph was true and accurate, especially in relationship to landscaping that would be provided on site. What I didn't think through thoroughly when we had discussed this is the reality is that the elevation of that berm is so much higher than everything on our site. You won't actually be able to physically see our landscaping from the highway. You actually won't even be able to see our building except for perhaps the itty-bitty top of it as we can barely make out in this graphic. So to make sure that all the folks in the audience, as well as board members or otherwise, have that clarity relative to those site views and what can be seen. Again, it is just the very top of the building in relationship to that existing berm.
This is just for clarification. This is I ninety-three eastbound, which is two seven, two two seven of our packet.
And one of the one of the items that was pointed out was the prior elevation that we have provided wasn't through the area in which we were actually providing the relief, where we were cutting down the berm. So a very good observation. These plans provide that additional information that hopefully brings clarity and closure to what can or cannot be seen from the highway.
Do you have a question?
I I just wanted to say that I asked for these with under the architectural design review aspect of it to see, to try to understand. I wanted them to provide us with some information so we could really understand what the impact on the topography is going to be and how that relates to the massing of the buildings and the landscape around it. So if you haven't looked, I I thought they were very helpful. Thank you for providing those. They 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 really show different points. I mean, I would even like more so you can see at every point. But there are, I think they've done like five of them now.
Yep.
And they have a more recent one. So in the report, I say that there was concerns from the butter about what she would see due to the landscaping having been cleared and a lot. So they actually did a fifth one, which I will add to this, you know, after the fact so that the public can click on this. It's under architectural elevations and sections. So you can see, like like Nick said.
As well.
Yeah, there's that to the left is the slope that is between the butter and and the proposal. Now, they don't have the parking structure or the hotel on there, but I think you can even tell if you, you know, it's probably not going to be very visible if even the top of it, the very top of it might be visible. So thank you for providing those. I thought they were really helpful and to the members of public. That's under architectural elevations and sections.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
So Heather, is there a lot of disruption of the site, though, that doesn't include like necessarily the landscape, like restoration of what's been?
Well, they're cutting into the slope, so they'll have retaining for phase two. For phase one, they're trying to minimize as much as possible, so.
So phase one, none of really this revised elevation where we're dropping that berm, that's not going to happen till phase two. So we are kind of flashing forward, but it was a request to make sure there was an understanding of the massing and what would be visual since we had provided some previous representations.
In my opinion, what the most impacted, like what you're talking about, regard to what you're talking about, is the front of the site where they're putting the stormwater, where they're cutting through to put the the secondary access in the stormwater basins. I recommend that they, I mean, they're saying they're going to put the wildflower mix. I said you should put some trees and shrubs back here. It's just going to, right now, it's completely vegetated. It's going to be completely bare because the whole thing is going to be completely regraded.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was
Yeah, it's the frontage of the site that where the most disturbance will happen.
We've got the landscape plan up right now, and this was, I think, the last comment that was really included within the staff report. So is it this area right here?
Yeah, it's all going to be completely cleared and
I would note that the vast majority of this area right now is actually gravel. It's that inner pad area. Acknowledge that we'll have our stormwater management basin there. Within that area, obviously, we're not going to have plantings. Along those side slopes, DES does tell us we need to keep those mowed, so we wouldn't necessarily provide them there. I suppose there's some opportunity in through this area in which additional plantings could be provided. I just, I thought it appropriate to at least point out, though, that beyond just the New England Conservation Wild mix that's being provided. I noticed there's some discussion of butterflies earlier. That's definitely a very ecology-friendly seed mix. We do exceed the regulations as it is now with seventy-eight shade trees and over four hundred and eighty shrubs and ornamental grasses, including sixty-five percent more green space than required. I guess we looked at it and said, we thought we did a good job relative to landscape design. If there's additional requirements or needs from this board relative to landscaping, acknowledging ADR had looked at this and felt comfortable with it, just I guess we need to know that that's the flavor of the board and that that's something that we need to incorporate. So that would be a loose end. That would be appreciative to to clear up this evening if possible.
Okay.
Well, if you were to like keep mowing it once a year, you're never going to get regeneration.
Ideally, and this is one of the benefits of it, is we're not mowing it. We allow that to really take on a natural condition. With the exception of the area immediately adjacent to the emergency access road, it would allow us to really let Mother Nature do her thing and fill in naturally, which I think would be our preference here. You have the more manicured areas that are within the parking lots and approaching the building. But otherwise, you know, we are trying to fit into our natural topography as best as possible. And that that seed mix does does wonders for that purpose. So that was our hope in using that and not jumbling it with other plantings, which would maybe look a little awkward.
It might be helpful just to put some, you know, bare root type, you know, small seedlings in there, not like three-inch caliber shade trees or anything like that. But, you know, that type, that's the type of environment where invasive species just take off like crazy. That's that's their whole MO is go into a disturbed area and then, especially if you're not going to maintain or mow it, I would say put some, you know, one-inch little whips or something in there to get the right species started.
That's something I can follow to you on after.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Jeff?
Mr. Colan, thank you very much for providing the cuts. And I understand some of those cuts are showing phase two work. And what really, when you mentioned sheet two of seven, that's the one that caught my eye because if you look at the elevations you're cutting down to in the building, you do see about twenty-five feet of the top of the hotel building. So my question really goes to what DOT thinks of these because when DOT bought the right-of-way through there, they bought rights of air, land and view, which means developers aren't supposed to basically cut trees, do this to be able to see their property in terms of signage and other things. So there looks like there, you could get what you need for your grading in phase two and maybe not have to take down as much of the hill. And I just would like to see before we move into phase two some information from the DOT that they've seen these and this meets with something they're okay with because of that view factor. I understand, you know, my whole point was I wanted to make sure we weren't setting phase one grades such that phase two had to take the hill flat. And that's really what I wanted to see. And I think this gives me some feeling there is still a little bit of ability to create a little more berm. You've kind of flat-topped it, and I think if we could round it more and bring it up a little bit, restore the plantings.
There's still a lot of different opportunities.
Understood. And and I'm not holding you to any of that tonight. I really do appreciate this. I just want to make sure before we do phase two, when it comes, that we get that clarification from DOT, that they're a hundred percent acceptable with that because of that whole right-of-way purchase of the view.
No, that's a perfectly reasonable request. And our expectation is, assuming we're able to be successful with phase one and get this project constructed, we are immediately going to pursue the opportunity for phase two. Too many balls in the air. I wouldn't want to leave that to be uncertain. So we have our letter from DOT from from the commissioner, now commissioner, stating, you know, we don't we don't see a fatal flaw here, but you still got to do the work. So that's the next step would be to do.
Yep, and and I'm not holding you to anything now. I just want to make sure that's not something that's forgotten about that when phase two comes in, suddenly it's like, oh, yeah, we we thought we were okay to go. That's something I want to make sure is just understood that that'll have to come back.
Very upset with us if we went too far down the line without securing that approval.
Other questions, Jeff?
No, that's that was
Just to address the on the traffic, I was the guy that got stuck behind that that flatbed, right? Egress, you know? Can you just elaborate a little bit on, so now we're we're two lanes of exit, left and right, and there's going to be a light there in phase one. As part of that of that process, we did talk last month a little bit about pedestrian crossing. And is there a provision for pedestrian pedestrian intervention? So that if nobody, no cars are trying to get out there, can somebody walk across that road? I was out there again just to kind of get a feel for what that might look like. And unfortunately, the speed limit seems to be about fifty-five miles an hour going around that little slope where this where that light will be. So have we, is as part of this phase one light thing, what have have we addressed any pedestrian issues in that crossing?
I'm going to help Bob a little bit with that one from the fact that there there is a waiver before the board that we wanted to discuss with you regarding providing a sidewalk along our frontage to break a day drive. There's also a comment in there relative to staff also requesting us to install one on Loudon Road. Now, that's not a waiver. We're just saying we don't feel that that should be the applicant's responsibility because that's not our property and we don't have any frontage on it. I would have the expectation that with that light being installed as part of phase one, that we would also look at, you know, the multimodal aspect of that sidewalk to see whether or not that's appropriate to install. Our expectation, as shown in the comprehensive development plan, is that that sidewalk could eventually be built. It was a matter of the timing. What we didn't want to do is build it now, only to find out during phase two, there would need to be some sort of modification, and it gets wiped out. The other aspect of that waiver request is the the ongoing conversation we have whenever we're proposing a development project, and that's of fragmented sidewalks. Do we build a sidewalk to nowhere now in the hopes that it's connected to later? I know that there are significant feelings on both sides, so that was something that we wanted to make sure was a conversation tonight. And I think your comment plays into that as well, is how is that being addressed? And the expectation was that would be addressed as part of phase two. Whereas hopefully by then, maybe the city has gotten further in their master planning of installing a sidewalk along Loudon Road.
Respond to that? I I'm only asking to respond to that since you said you wanted addressed tonight. You've hopefully read my report. We're, staff is very strongly in support of them providing the sidewalk now, both on break of day and on Loudon Road. It's a huge development. It's going to be very significant. We already have a sidewalk master plan that says there should be sidewalks in these locations. Loudon Road is in the sidewalk master plan. It's constantly brought up about fragmented sidewalks. Unfortunately, that's unless you're going to put, you know, a really high-dollar CIP in the budget and have the city construct the entire thing, this is exactly why it is in the site plan regulations. There's very much of an awareness that they get constructed piecemeal like this. That's why it's a requirement in there so that eventually these things will all connect. I can't stress enough, this is in the sidewalk master plan. People are going to be walking here. And it's definitely something that should be provided for public health and safety if this development goes through.
Well, one of the things I think that, looking forward at this, is I believe right around the corner, opposite San, didn't we approve, there's some workforce housing project going in right around the corner from this? I would assume that that's going to generate pedestrian traffic to this facility.
Possibly.
So that's that's my concern on getting across, just observing, if you sit there for five minutes and watch traffic go by, it goes by fast. And that's a pretty wide, for a pedestrian to run across that.
Well, they're already also be doing the signalized intersection, doing the signal.
Right.
And additional lanes too. They didn't mention that, but it'll be one-way, you know, single lane in and two lanes out.
Right.
So there should definitely be these, you know, amenities provided.
Okay, okay. Jeff? Sorry, you just triggered some. So you indicated that in the the updated plans that there was truck turn templates. I see truck turns on sheet eighteen, unless they're at the top of the page and I missed them. No?
Sheet T one and T two.
Right, so T one appears to be fire truck. T two appears to be the tractor-trailer truck. But I noticed there's no right turn in on T two for the tractor-trailer truck. And I'm assuming you're going to try and get trucks to come on three ninety-three, not Loudon Road if they're going to from the site. So I don't see the right turn in. And the reason it concerns me is I see that the left turnout goes across the painted island. So I'm curious to what the right turn in is going to look like. So if you could provide that updated.
Certainly. And one of the things I'll I'll kind of hearken to a little bit here is we got an awful bit of space in between ourselves and the curb.
Which there's fine. It gets tight, I think, on the inner corner. Little farther around, perhaps if you wide, could widen a little further around. You know, you wouldn't need to be as tight, wide on the bottom corner. It could be more further up break of day. And then that way, keeps the speeds down for the cars making the right send. It allows more room for the trucks, especially since there's right-of-way. If there wasn't right-of-way and you were pushing up against the butter, yeah, then I think.
Yeah, because right now, we've widened this fairly significantly to try and accommodate that turn. So, yeah, we're happy to provide.
Yeah, just it just coordinate, I'm sure VHB will be the ones or Jose will be reviewing it. So I'll assume that they can take a look and figure out the best way. I just noticed it wasn't in the plan, and I just want to make sure that is addressed because I think that's where the majority of that large traffic should come from, not volume traffic, size, meaning vehicles. I just want to clarify for the audience. I don't mean volume.
Even we have chapel tractor next door, I think we'd be well-served to make sure those trucks can make that turn.
All right, let's let's have you guys step back for a bit and take some testimony. I think, yes.
So I wanted to respond to Mr. Cronin's request for more information about the, our recommendation about the municipal assessment, services impact assessment. So this isn't something we've had to do before because we haven't had this magnitude of a development that potentially could have these impacts. We wouldn't give you any consultant recommendations anyway because we're not allowed to do that legally. We can't, you know, send shunt business off one way or the other. However, I would assume a professional who works with statistical analysis of of market analysis or other economic development analysis would use the same tools and strategies for the type of analysis that we're looking for. We did provide some, you know, some
We did provide some, you know, some guidance, sorry, some guidance in our report. The assessment should review demand for public safety for comparable facilities. In other words, compare the numbers with other facilities that are of similar size with similar uses. Project potential demand for public safety services for the proposed facility. Again, presumably based on the comparable facilities that you choose. And estimate the impacts that it potentially could have on the city's department. So those are sort of the three big pieces that we're identifying. I would think that you would scope something out and propose it to us. Say, here, this is, this is our proposal to meet this recommendation that you're, you know, what you've asked for. We'll review that and then you'll find, you'll just go ahead and go through that process. So that's, that's what I would suggest. You propose something to us, scope it out, say, these are the facilities we're going to look at. You know, give us the statistics on those facilities. This is the size, this is the, you know, what they serve. These are what the things we're going to look at, and this is how we're going to lay out the study. You know, we'll look at that and then we'll review it once you submit it.
Very helpful. My, I wasn't expecting a recommendation. My hope is maybe you've had a few of them with, that were well-done and got approved, and I could take a look at a public record. But you've answered that question. The only other thing in that regard, my understanding, and I'm aware of the Noll project and a few other things, and maybe some exciting things going on at the mall. If there are other projects, is there a way to coordinate that? Because in my term as Jim of the Manchester Police Commission, when we're looking at FTEs and adding vehicles and impacts, we're not looking at site-specific. Because, you know, every use is going to have an impact, whether it's a single-family house or Foxborough Stadium. So the question is if you have a sector and we're adding a sector car, or we're adding two, or we're adding an ambulance, it's hard to do that analysis in a meaningful way with objective data if you're looking at it site-specific in a vacuum. So I was wondering if there's a way, like, maybe I could talk to you offline and see what data is available on those other five, and maybe we can at least have that information. So we don't come with a report that's subjective, right? Because I know people have opinions about every kind of project and you can take data and move it. Without objective benchmarks, it's hard to have anything meaningful. We've talked about it and we're willing to try and provide it. And I just want to make sure the work product that's delivered is something that's meaningful for you. The other question before we step back is with respect to the sidewalk master plan, I don't know with the new infrastructure funding, how the master plan envisioned funding the sidewalks, or if there's any ongoing effort to get some of that infrastructure money that's available for sidewalks throughout the community.
So the master plan knows the location, the master plan is used for various other purposes as well. And so it prioritizes where we want sidewalks so that we know when projects come up where we want to put them. The site plan regulations actually require them for every project. So we offer the opportunity through our site plan regulations that you can either pay a fee into, you know, pay a fee in lieu for the sidewalk or construct the sidewalk. So in cases where it's actually part of the sidewalk master plan, we, our recommendation would be that it be constructed. There was a project that was recently approved that was not part of the sidewalk master plan. They offered to pay the fee, and we were okay with that option in that case. So I'm not sure how to necessarily answer your question, but it's a guide for us.
That's fair enough. I was just wondering if there's opportunity. And that's certainly understandable, happens all the time. You build it, or you bond it, or fund it, or whatever. If it's something that's remote, because once you build it, no one wants to maintain a sidewalk to nowhere either. But by the same token, that gets gray when you get outside the reasonable nexus. You know, if you're, and I don't know how far down Loudoun Road. I know it's a long street. And I don't think we need to have that discussion today. We'll take a look at the sidewalk, see what we can provide. And if there was money available for it, I certainly wanted to pursue it. If there's not, there's not.
And I'd be happy to follow up with you on scoping that study.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. We'll have you guys step back. At the February meeting, we did ask the city's police and fire departments to provide comment. We did get some comment back, and we invite them up if they'd like to come up. We got fire on the list first, if that's available, if we could. If you want to come up, come on up. I know you want to come up. You don't have to.
Well, you better make that more clear. Sounds like you've called them to the table.
You don't have to, just for the record, you don't have to come up. But if you want, I wanted, okay. I wanted to invite you up. I didn't want to make you feel like you had to come up.
If there's no questions, we didn't have anything further from what we were talking about.
Okay, questions from the board?
No.
Good, thank you.
The report was comprehensive.
It was comprehensive, thank you very much. Same question then to the police department folks.
If you have specific questions, I'll be happy to step up.
Any specific questions from the board? Good, thank you very much. And again, thank you for comprehensive work. You're good, okay. Okay, so let's open it up to the public. Would someone like to come on up? Sir, go ahead and up.
And please, everyone who comes up, remember to sign in. Clearly, we are having quite a challenge making out some of your handwriting, and we do want for the record to spell your names correctly.
And just remember, this is an extension from last month's meeting. I did watch every second of last month's meeting. So if you gave testimony last month, don't feel like you need to give it again for me because I was here in.
But do feel free to quiz him.
Yeah, yeah, do feel free to ask me questions. Okay, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Curry. I live at Josiah Barlow Road, about a half mile away from the proposed casino. And after everything I've heard, I'm still adamantly opposed to the project. We've heard a lot about Phase One, and tonight I just learned that they would be proceeding with Phase Two almost as soon as Phase One was complete. That's what the engineer seemed to say. Well, I recognize that Phase Two is not up for discussion here. It is a major part of the overall project and deserves some mention here. Significantly, I think there are no architectural renderings of Phase Two to show what the site will look like if Phase Two comes to fruition. Well, Phase One covers about forty-five thousand square feet. Phase Two will more than double that, over one-hundred thousand square feet added to the site, to total one-hundred and forty-five thousand, six-hundred and fifty-four square feet. About twenty-five percent of the property. And another two-hundred and twenty-one thousand, four-hundred and forty-six, forty-six square feet will be paved, parking as well, which means that about two-thirds of the roughly thirteen-acre site will be built environment. Phase Two includes a three-story, four-hundred and fifty-six-space parking garage, an eight-hundred-seat event area, and a hundred-and-fifty-room hotel. For comparison's sake, the School Street parking garage has four-hundred and sixty-seven spaces. The Store Street garage has five-hundred and sixteen. The eight-hundred-seat event area would be about two-thirds the size of the Capital Center's thirteen-hundred seats. And this venue will likely compete with the Cap Center in the back of New Hampshire Stage for acts and audiences and potentially damage the revitalized Main Street. The proposed one-hundred-and-fifty-room hotel would be, I think, the largest hotel in Concord. The Holiday Inn has one-hundred and twenty-two rooms on four floors, while the Courtyard Marriott has ninety rooms. So the proposed hotel is over twenty percent larger than the Holiday Inn on Main Street. In summary, the scale of this project at the end of Phase Two will dwarf its surroundings. It will likely be visible for most roadways. Its storm, its traffic, its stormwater parking lot runoff to Secretary Brooke will likely be considerable, while the water and sewer demands of a one-hundred-and-fifty-room hotel will be significant. All this on top of the fact that gambling is an inherently regressive way to obtain tax revenue. Lastly, I'd like to quote from one of our nation's founders on the subject of gambling. "The last thing I shall mention of first, is first of most, is first of importance, and that is to avoid gaming. This is a vice which is productive of every possible evil, equally injurious to the morals and health of its votaries. It is the child of avarice, the brother of inequity, and father of mischief. It has been the ruin of many worthy families, the loss of many a man's honor, and the cause of suicide. To all those who enter the list, it is equally fascinating. The successful gamester pushes his good fortune till it is overtaken by reverse. The losing gamester, in hopes of retrieving past misfortunes, goes on from bad to worse, till grown desperate, he pushes at everything and loses his all. In a word, fuel gained by this abominable practice, the profit, if any, being diffused, while thousands are injured. Signed, George Washington." So thank you for your attention here.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Who's next? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could state your name for the record?
Patrice Myers.
Sorry?
Patrice Myers.
Okay, if you could pull that a little closer, thank you.
Okay. As far as the traffic impact, has anyone ever checked how much or how many accidents are occurring off of the 393 ramps? I've seen a lot more lately than has been. Not to mention the other intersections. There's a lot more accidents now. I wonder how many more this will generate. If you go down North Main Street, or, yeah, North State Street, they just added a lot of new residential areas, and that has significantly impacted the traffic. And that's just down there, and it's just residential. The building was, I, the building that they showed, that the actual building is a lot bigger than the proposed building that they had at first. Am I wrong in that? Is that the Phase One building, or is that the Phase Two building?
The red, the one that showed red, that was the Phase One building. It's flat elevation, so as you see it, it doesn't kind of show the architectural view from the corner where it's different.
Okay, I'm confused as to how they could make such a disparity in their first proposed.
I don't think there's any change, there's no change in the size of the building. The building is the same size.
It's the same size?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, because it looked, it looked bigger on the picture. Okay, and the pedestrian issues, of course. As far as that goes, I'm already paying enough in taxes. I do not need to pay for something I don't want. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your testimony.
Can you sign in, please?
Yes, please. Who's next? Come on up.
Wait, we got two coming up.
I'll figure it out. What was that? Somebody said something.
We were saying there's sign-in sheets in both locations.
Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Matthew Flynn. I live in Concord. I've been a resident of Concord since around 2014. I moved here previously from New York State. And there's been some discussion, well, first say, I'm here to testify in support of this project. I feel that it'll be a benefit to the community. And there's been some discussion about gambling. I serve as the Secretary of the Samar Scholarship Fund. It's a nonprofit organization, and we partner currently with the draft where we receive revenues from charitable gaming. Those revenues go to support scholarships. For UNH, oh, sorry, for UNH Army ROTC cadets. And with their help, we've been able to provide thousands of dollars to these Army ROTC cadets. And as a former Army officer and a former cadet, I can speak to how far that money does go to these individuals in college. There's been some commentary about gambling. On that, I'll say, this is New Hampshire. I, one of the things I take pride in about being in a live-for-or-die state is that we allow individuals to make their own decisions. I have no further testimony, and welcome any questions.
Any questions for this, Mr. Flynn? Thank you very much for your testimony.
And your service.
Thank you for what you guys are doing. Appreciate it.
Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Yes, good evening. Name is Ron Rayner. Resident here since eighty-nine on the corner of Romford and Short. So with regard to the applicant tonight, the casino complex, I have heard quite a few things that I understand. So the, a lot of things are up in the air. A lot of procedures are still being evaluated, traffic being one. So I take it they're going to return, of course, for more meetings. Relative to traffic, I have two concerns overall, traffic and crime. For traffic, although I've heard a lot of comments about ADT, average daily traffic volume, and peak flows and all of this, I haven't heard anything, and I was here for most of last month's meeting. I haven't heard anything about traffic volumes at key holiday weekends. I haven't heard anything, like, about Memorial Day, July Fourth, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas. What are the higher peak volumes going to do relative to this facility? And also race weekend. So, you know, all right, so there's one race every, this year at the Loudoun Race Track rather than two. But as you know, they even make one-on-six. They make it, instead of two and two, it's three and one. So I haven't heard anything relative to those, to that effort, to that focus on holiday weekends, race weekend. And frankly, I'm still a skier. I have friends up in the Lakes Region. I go up on weekends. As you guys know, you know, 393, heading east, one-on-six going north, is busy on Friday nights and busy coming south on Sunday nights. I haven't heard anything relative to either winter tourism skiers or summer tourists on the lakes. So I haven't heard anything, I think, unless I'm wrong, I would really think that needs to be addressed. That's one. Secondly, public safety relative to crime. We have, right now, so these charitable gaming commissions, we have fourteen already are in the state presently. That's what exists today without this new facility. So it kind of begs the question, when is enough enough? But moving aside from that, what I would like to see is, as the applicant made an effort to reach out to the communities where these already exist, such as Belmont nearby, and say, hey, folks, if you were to do this all over again today, would you do anything different to deter crime, whether it be corruption, whether it be gambling, whether it be drugs? And I don't know if that effort has been done. I'm questioning, I'm not in the police community, but I'm questioning, is there some type of state association? Whether it be state police, local police, the, the. The attorney for the applicant mentioned he's affiliated with a commission in Manchester, so he might know. But is there someone they could reach out to and say, okay, out of the fourteen gaming commissions that already exist, here is what is, here are the crimes that are most common? And do a bulletized list? Because if they could do something like that, then we might be able to say, okay, to compensate for that here in Concord, we propose to do the following to minimize that occurrence. I have not seen that. I guess last, it'd be nice if the applicant could speak as to why he didn't propose his facility in his own hometown of Bedford, but that's be the here and there.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Rain?
Yes, this is actually a question for staff. Wouldn't the proposed emergency services impact assessment cover some of the questions about public safety?
I was going to say, they were looking for a consultant.
So that, but that assessment would ask some of those questions.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And I'm sort of taking note of the things that he's saying. I mean, I've asked them, so for members of the audience who perhaps have not read my report, staff made the recommendation that the applicant do an emergency services impact analysis, a study essentially, to answer some of the questions that you're asking.
On traffic?
Yeah, no, on public safety.
Okay.
Emergency services, police, fire, ambulance, to look at comparable facilities and generate some numbers and then come back and tell us, you know. So they haven't scoped that study yet, but we've asked them for it. And so, you know, you're suggesting some things that, that we might say, you know, hey, look, take a look at this and that.
Will that study, though, will it focus on people with a health ailment at the facility where any EMTs are needed or fire versus crime? Shooting, drugs? There's a difference?
Yes.
Okay. I suggest they look at both.
It is, yeah, that's what you said.
It'll look at police and fire needs.
Okay.
Right, but it's, but it's good to know that that's a concern to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I was just joking when I said they were, because we were talking earlier about scoping, you know, that study.
Okay.
And so we haven't seen one before, we haven't done one before. So we need to come up with it. What, what should it look like?
And hopefully they'll address the traffic relative to key weekends.
I don't know if that will come up, but.
Well, it should.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And don't forget to sign in.
Oh, one sheet for both?
It's what, if you've signed in once, you're fine.
Once, just sign one of them. Hi, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure. Hi, my name is Rebecca Skye. I'm a near thirty-year resident of Concord. I want to thank you for what you're doing. It was great to see how concerned this planning board is about the safety of Concord residents. You've talked about many studies and analysis looking at, to ensure that, about traffic and public sa, and fire and police, and that's wonderful. I just wanted to suggest to this committee, which was just brought up in part, an assessment of a, a, a public health analysis about what the impact of this might be upon our community of this project. I, most of the time that I've lived here in Concord, I, I have worked in the field of public health, I've worked in the field of addiction. I have served on the Board of the New Hampshire Harm Reduction Coalition, which is dedicated to the implementation of public health strategies that reduce the harm associated with drug use and misuse. And I've also been a president of the New Hampshire Public Health Association, a past president. So I say this, not that I'm representing those organizations, I am representing myself here, but just to say that I have this background in public health and, and am concerned about this project's impact upon the public health of Concord. Addiction is a chronic disease of the brain characterized by a use that is compulsive and difficult to control despite harmful consequences. The biochemistry of gambling is, is nearly identical to, to other substance use disorders. And while many view addiction as tied to a single habit or vice, addiction replacement is not uncommon. Ex-smokers sometimes move to food to get that, to get that dopamine release. So I do, I just, the question is, is do we really want to introduce another venue that promotes an activity that can lead to an addiction? Would we allow a, a building of a factory in Concord that produces chemicals that would, that could be cancer-causing to operate without safeguards? And I just hope that this group is, is in your considerations of the architecture and, and the sidewalks and everything else is, is thinking about that, that, some, some social infrastructure to keep our community safe. While casinos provide good jobs for individuals that work in casinos, a 2018 study by the National Institute of Health suggests that casino workers may be twice as likely to develop gambling problems as those of the general populace. And, and studies since then have suggested that the risk might even be higher. So I do have some thoughts on, on some mitigation that can be done. Happy to have further conversations about that. I have a brother who's a nationally known addiction researcher specifically focused on gambling, who is willing to provide additional insight if that's ever desired. And I, I just, in, in closing, I think we need to balance what our, what our town and our local nonprofits might gain from this business venture versus the costs to our community. Many of the nonprofits whose budgets receive a boost from the profit share, sharing that exists, do, exist primarily to prevent and address harms in our society. And so we just need to be thoughtful about creating the potential for more harms in the Concord community. So again, thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Questions? Thank you. Nope, we're good. Thank you.
Add public health assessment into that.
Thank you. Again, if you, if you can sign in before you come up, that would help move things along. That would be great. Or sign in afterwards. Come on up. Just come on up so we can keep moving. I think you guys have been up before. If you've got something new to add, please feel free, but I, I know we've seen you guys before, at least once or twice.
Yeah, I'm Norman Roeburg. I'm representing both the Dunbarton Historical Society and the Concord Lions Club. Yours?
I'm Carl Nolan, N-O-L-I-N, and I'm here as I was the last time. And I wore some colorful outfits for you tonight.
Thank you.
So we'll break it up a little bit. I know everything's been serious, so I'll, I'll just go through my wardrobe just to give you an idea as to why I wore them. First of all, guess what this one is? Lions Club, right? Guess what this one is? Twenty-seven years active duty, United States Army. This one, post-21, Magnum Legion, baseball. You're state champions this year. Twenty-two, and we're going to be twenty-three also. And I have other.
Yeah, if you can just, you gotta, you gotta turn around and talk to the board.
Oh, I got it, I got it, I got this.
You're not talking to the audience.
I got this, okay. I'm done with that. And I also have my socks.
Okay.
And they've got.
What can you tell us about the casino, in favor of it, not in favor of it?
Okay. Obviously, these organizations that I've talked about, plus seven more, because when you retire, you don't retire. You get pulled into this board, that board, this organization, that organization, you all know that. And if you don't, you will. But in speaking for a casino, I'm not necessarily saying that gambling's good, gambling's bad. I'm not saying which street should have a street light. What I'm saying is that the Lions Club just gave $5,000 to the walking program for the site and the deaf personnel of the community, Concord and the state. We just gave $3,000 in scholarships to high school students going on to college. We just, we give to the Girl Scouts, we give to the YMCA, we give to all of these organizations, the Association for Retarded Citizens, because we feel that they need the extras that we can't get out of taxing everyone. The casinos provide a, an opportunity for all of us to do some of these things that we couldn't do. I couldn't go around to y'all every week and say, I need $10. I need $15 because we're going to give a scholarship, because you're already doing that. It's not new. This, this opportunity came to me twenty years ago when I started going to Seabrook. I would drive to Seabrook to get in on the casino because those, in those years, we were giving to many more organizations. One year we gave $37,000 out of the Lions. The Handicap Association made $15,000. And the baseball team, thank God, made its $15,000 also so that we can have a team that doesn't charge the players a cent. No transportation, no meals, no uniforms. If you go to other organizations who are doing baseball, you better get your wallet out. And some of you already know that. Twenty-seven hundred for baseball.
Got you.
That's it from me.
Thank you.
No, I think one of the things here that we're supposed to be speaking about, the building itself, if you want to get the site, but again, unfortunately, everybody's looking at what the activity is going to be. And that, due to the state, again, lottery commission, again, here, that the gaming facilities are strictly regulated, again, here, and New Hampshire is unique in that thirty percent of the gaming proceeds, again, go to the, go to the charity, that goes over in sponsors, and we can only sponsor ten days a year. So it basically broadens out the, the sponsorship. It's also with the strong regulations, if you want, here, the amount that is, that is wagered or able to be able to, to be wagered is small. This is not a Las Vegas, again, casino, it's not a, you know, again, a Massachusetts, if you want casino, again, where you basically have, the casino operators are the ones that are, that are there, are active, again, are not, are not being sponsored, if you want, by anybody else, and just have, obviously, the, the state regulations. But their betting limits and the like here are totally different, okay, than what the gaming, charitable gaming is. So that, one of the items from a point of the oper, the operators, again, the sponsors, if you want, okay, because without the charity, the facility can't run.
Right.
So that's the, you know, the biggest item, that's one of the reasons why you want to testify, is that, yes, we're the reason, basically, here, that the facility is going to be built and the benefits do go out to the communities. That's it.
Great. Thank you, guys, for your testimony.
Live free or die.
And thank you for your service. Who's next?
I'll sign in after, is that okay?
That's fine, yep. And again, just to reiterate, I mean, this is a planning board, this isn't, this is, you know, what we hear is, we're, we're here to hear and what we're, our purview is, is the building.
Of course.
And the use of it is, is important, I know, but it's not really in our purview, so.
Sure. I'll be brief. I'm just going to read this because I, I believe it's the quickest way to get through this. This is on my forte. But, my name is Scott Blanco. I'm here on behalf of the Grand Estate Destroyers, a local adult men's non-football, football team, and we do support the Concord Casino Expansion Project, and I will list why. I believe it will not only help revitalize the local businesses with an influx of visitors and out-of-state tourists, as well as help support local charities with the New Hampshire Games of Chance Program, which donates a portion of proceeds to these organizations. With the slow decline of businesses at the Concord Mall and the closure of other businesses in the area like Toys R Us and the newly announced closing of the Regal Cinemas, the area has seemed to take a downward spiral with locals and visitors who want to spend the hard-earned money. This proposal would help support and expand the east side of Concord with local, new local businesses and help possibly more local events with the addition of a hotel and gaming center. It would also contribute to the Concord tax base without further taxation on local businesses and without an additional burden on schools. It could also open up space on Main Street for local businesses to expand, as well as free up parking space in the already congested area, downtown area. As a Loudon resident, who does most of my shopping in the east side of Concord, I welcome the thought of additional new businesses to the area that would provide more of a selection and purchasable goods and services that would open as a result of this casino and hotel, bringing in more local people and visitors alike to this area, area of town. As a nonprofit organization, we rely on support from the Concord Casino Games of Chance Program to help fund our program from supporting local youth football programs to maintaining game and practice fields. I believe this proposal would not only benefit, would benefit not only our organization, but many of the other local nonprofit organizations in the area in these difficult times. Now is the time to think about the future of Concord, New Hampshire, with the recent expansion of Manchester and its development of housing and commerce. I believe this Concord Casino proposal would help put Concord back on the map and provide a unique opportunity to contribute to its expansion in addition to donating to local charities. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Blanco? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Who's next? Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Yeah, my name is Don Jewell. Good evening, board, staff, board members.
Yeah, Edward Jaworski.
I, I am here and I am not in favor of this project. I have a wide range of concerns about it. I, I am interested in knowing what sort of market research these people have done to make them believe that there's enough demand for what will be offered on this site to support the massive overhead that they will incur from this project. I personally don't believe there's, it's a feasible project financially. Secondly, I just, from observing the site that is already in operation here in Concord, I, I don't appreciate it from the standpoint of a Main Street facility. I have, I just know from the records of police calls to the business that the culture there that seems to have developed and the owners there are responsible for that culture is, is not, it's not a family place for sure. And the way it's taken care of, it's just not a very pleasant sight to see on Main Street. And several weeks ago, I was walking by and the place was closed because the, the pipes were froze. So I'm concerned of what, do we want to magnify the amount of, of problems we have already because of that business by going along with what they're proposing here? You know, charitable gambling, I mean, Al Capone ran soup kitchens during the Depression. Don Gotti, big fireworks displays and barbecues and such for the ghetto kids in New York City. But a lot came along with that that was pretty undesirable and unhealthy. I happen to personally know someone that committed suicide because of gambling debts. He left behind a wife and four kids. He lost his house. I know another guy, eighty-two years old. He collateralized his gambling debts by his home and gambling at Foxwoods. Traffic? I mean, we mentioned traffic issues earlier on 106 and 93, but I know traffic east-west on 202 and nine is, is considerably heavy on holiday weekends and weekends in general, race events, and it would only get worse. And that's not a particularly easy road to drive on because of the sun can be blinding. So I believe that will result in more accidents there. I wonder if there were other sites considered by the proposers of this project that might be less pedestrian and traffic-heavy? I, casino's formula for success is cheap hotel rates, cheap drinks, cheap food, so that people will come and spend their money on gambling. Well, those items bring a lot of other undesirable activities too. And as a Christian in this community, I, if this project goes through, if these planners and proposers of this project would really cared about the community and the different sects of this community, perhaps they would consider closing on Sundays the casino, or even the existing one they have, to reach out to the Christian community, pay their respect to us as well. And I do, if this project is approved, I certainly hope that what we have on Main Street will disappear and go up there. That might be the only blessing I see in this project.
I represent a, a group of people in our society that hold traditional values, and I suspect that that is a larger group than we might, might guess. But anyway, concerning traditional values, we would agree that gambling is way down on the list in terms of importance, simply because morality is far more important than money. And we're not eliminating the freedom that people have to gamble. We're not standing in judgment upon those who do gamble and the benefits that are reaped from gambling. upon those who do gamble and the benefits that are reaped from gambling that have been mentioned. That is obvious. But at the same time, because morals are more value than money, of greater value than money, we need to think about, as Dawn has mentioned, the moral impact that gambling and all that goes with it brings upon our society. That impact is often hidden and disguised and so on, but it's there. Dawn has mentioned a couple of instances that he is aware of. Probably all of us have aware, are aware of people who have gone through tragedies because of gambling and things related to it. And I guess our, the appeal of traditional values is for the greater good. The greater good of our community and the greater good of our fellow citizens, our neighbors and our friends. And the greater good is always for looking out for one another. And to use the old expression, "Am I my brother's keeper?" Yes, I am. And you are too. Now, how well we do that is something we will give account of before God. But in terms of benefiting mankind and benefiting our community, I think we want to hold to as high a standard as possible. And in doing so, be assured of God's blessing as a result. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, who's next? If you guys could state your names for the record.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Resido.
Take homes.
And we are members of the Board of Directors of Applewood Learning Center, which is an early childhood education organization that is, you know, basically daycare centers. So typical ages are between three months and seven years. We've recently gained acceptance into the, into the proceeds of, that are generated from the Concord Casino. And, you know, this has been something for us as a small organization, has been really beneficial for us and our small community that we do have. We have a small Board of Directors of our team. It consists anywhere from five to seven members, you know, in any given year. So all of that is done voluntarily. There is no pay for that. Some of the things that we are able to do with the proceeds that we do receive are, you know, whether it's to improve staff wages, sometimes it's to help the infrastructure of our building itself. Also tries to lessen the financial impact on the families. For any of you who have had any experience of either working in or bringing your children to early childhood centers, you know, there isn't a lot of operating margin here. You know, it's very small dollars that come down at the bottom line. And unfortunately, it's something that does impact, you know, when you look at trying to, you know, retain and obtain teachers because it's not one of the best-paying jobs and you are working significantly longer, you know, hours and days than typically if you are a teacher at a public school. So, you know, one of the things that I would just say is that, you know, these dollars, we actually just talked about it at our recent meeting about how much that it's been a benefit to us because we don't have the outreach or the bandwidth to be able to do some of the charitable things that other organizations may be able to do.
So give us an idea of what you guys use that donations for, if you can. I mean, what, I don't even know how much it is, but what type of services or what type of products or what do you do with the money?
So one thing that we just recently done was new windows. So these windows were thirty-plus years old, and, you know, we were having significant issues with them to, you know, very drafty. And so that was one of the new things that we did do. We also put in a new roof just recently, about a year and a half ago.
And last year, we put on new HVAC units as well.
Yeah. So we've been able to take a lot of these funds and some of it's been, you know, through the help of some grants as well. But, you know, there's been, this has been, you know, a major force for us. One example that I would give is that, you know, right when I first started becoming a member of the Board, we had done a 5K charity event, something that we had to do all internally. And as I mentioned, because it's really about thirty to thirty-five families that are part of this, you know, that have children as part of the center. You know, trying to get thirty-five people that actually want to volunteer time to help generate something like that, a 5K, you don't really get that. So a lot of those hours are being driven by people who are on our Board of Directors. And so you have five or seven people trying to work, you know, multiple hundreds of hours to develop a program. And the last year that we ran it, we netted maybe a thousand or fifteen-hundred dollars. So you think about all that work that you needed to do, going through the town to get acceptance of the route that you want to run, working with the local police to make sure that they can, you know, make sure from a safety standpoint of the route that you are taking, to have a presence there. That was a ton of work that was put into, into efforts that, you know, really didn't bring much funds at all for us at the end. The first year worked very well, but, you know, it's one of those things where over time, because we don't have a large footprint of people that we can reach out to, it just slowly dwindles and dwindles over time. So, you know, other things that we do, once again, when, you know, when we talk about other fundraising options that we try to do, because I am part of our, I am our fundraising chair, a lot of it is what I would call double dipping. So what I mean by that is those families who are already paying into the center are the only people who are also supporting these other fundraising options. So if you talk about doing like a raffle or something like that, it's, you're not getting that full outreach. You may get, you know, an extension of a family member, but that's about it.
Okay.
Certainly, as I see it, you know, in support of the gaming center expanding, it not only helps our nonprofit, but it helps others with, you know, hopefully more seats, hopefully brings in more money, and helps more organizations across the state. I mean, every organization's only ten days a month, a year. So it's not like we're coming up, you know, multiple times a year, and it's wonderful how many organizations are able to help. And so we'll leave it with that.
Great. Thank you, guys, for your testimony.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Cassie Cameron. I'm not going to say the, do you want me to wait a second?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not going to say the things that I said last meeting because you guys have already heard that. So I'm just going to bring up a few questions I have about things that were discussed tonight, or at least in some of the paperwork that was submitted. The first part is going to be about fire and police. So in the fire department's report that they submitted on page one in the final paragraph, they talked about while things had met code, it may not be ideal to have these two traffic flows within a couple hundred feet of each other on Loudon Road, and that a single event could potentially disrupt both access routes into and out of the property. And I'm wondering if that's going to be addressed in the traffic analysis or in the, in the plan to rectify this, while it does meet code and it could potentially cause huger issues, especially public safety issues, if they're not able to get in there. And then if the fire department has any recommendations on what would be the best way to rectify this. The next thing was going to be about the police report. It was on page two in the final paragraph as well. They say that there were nine hundred and sixty-two reported traffic crashes on Loudon Road, and then that they say the proposed venue will add traffic to Loudon Road and Route 106. According to the traffic study that we were presented with, based on the data that they collected during the times, it, they're reporting that there will be very minimal impact at all. The areas in the traffic study that did show very negative impacts, they did show that it would go down a bit with the addition of the signal. But where we're getting information from the police department, who they show up to these accidents, they feel like they may have a better understanding than random data points collected. If they see that this is already a very heavily trafficked area and that there are crashes, their input of it being a significant impact, I think, should weigh just as heavily, considering how they know firsthand.
Good points. And I think, just for clarity, for those of you that may not have seen it, the, I think the fire chief, the fire chief, the fire report that we got summarized it pretty well, which said if specific impacts to fire department operations need to be solidified, a third-party study of the impacts of similar facilities on public safety services should be considered that address the anticipated number and nature of incidents at the facility. At that point, the fire department would be able to comment more confidently on our ability to absorb the call volume or its impacts it would have on the operations. That equally affects the police department and is one of the reasons we want some, some data to look at. We're data-driven. We look at things and say, you know, if it's, if this works, then this is the way it's going to be. And the fire department and the police department look at it the same way and say, you know, we can look at twenty-five other places and say, this is what we're going to anticipate. And if this is the case, yes, we can absorb it, or no, we can't. And here's what we recommend. And that's one of the points that we need to get some clarity on.
And I would love to see that analysis also before any approval to continue on versus allowing that to come after the fact. I think that's important to see the full scope of that, especially, I mean, I understand you guys are here just as the planning board. We're not talking about morals. We're not talking about legality. You know, we can all have different opinions on that, but this is solely about planning. And so if we can take into things that are impacting your actual decision, I think it's important to have all that information upfront and the safety of the pedestrians and the public, as well as the financial impact to Concord. If the police and fire department can't get in in a timely fashion, they can't do their jobs, would there be lawsuits that would impact the town because they can't get there efficiently? That comes down to impacting the town, all of the taxes that the residents pay. In addition, I feel like the police department and the fire department already used the budget that they have and spread it very thin. If they're now going to have to come up with more manpower to take care of these other issues, and while their job is to go to these businesses and make sure everything's running smoothly, I think it should be the business's priority as well to make sure that they're mitigating that to the best of their ability. What is their plan for private security at their facility? The current casino doesn't have any private security. It has no security staff. So as a taxpayer, I'm not looking to allow the owner to skimp out on security and use the police as their own private security for free on the taxpayer's dime. So if there will be an impact to the amount of police that would have to go to that area or have to make an impact, what is going to happen after this? Are we going to go back and say, well, if you're increasing the needs of the town and we have to hire another police officer, we have to pay more overtime, now who's going to take care of that? Is it going to come back to the business to contribute to a fund? Or is that left on us taxpayers? Because at the end of the day, the amount that they're giving to charity, is that actually going to offset the free money that they're giving out? Or is it going to just disperse? And we're going to end up paying for that in the form of, you know, the police, the fire department, or even the already strained New Hampshire State Mental Health Building. We already don't have enough beds. If we have additional people that are going to be coming and having breakdowns at the casino or the city being impacted through crime, that's going to put continued strain on our hospitals as well, which also comes into planning. The next thing I wanted to ask is that a market analysis be done and presented to the board before any further approval is done. While, again, everyone can have their business, and whether they're successful or not doesn't impact the planning board, but it does impact Concord's economic development policies and strategies, which does impact the planning board. We need to make sure that we have an economic return for the public and private investments in this area. So that would also come down to Concord City's investment into this area. And if this market is already saturated and there would not be potential for this business to continue on, we're going to have another vacant building, and there won't be any benefits to the taxpayers. There won't be any charitable donations or taxes coming in. It's not going to offset property tax. I know a lot of people think it's going to be a Mohegan Sun, but it's not. And it's not going to get rid of our property tax. It's not going to bring it down a ton. And so I think we need to look at what this is going to cost. Because undeveloped land in Concord, it's a premium. We don't have a lot of it. So we're going to give this undeveloped land to a company that could potentially go under. And now we have this vacant lot. We can't bring in something else that could potentially do better for the city. And then as far as the sidewalks, you did mention that it's something that was in the master plan. So that I would hope would be addressed before any conditional approvals. And finally, in the, I think it was the police report, or maybe the fire report, they had said that the racetrack for Loudon doesn't usually pose an issue or strain them because they provide their own security, their own private security. So I think that should, that's an additional point to make for why we should see what their private security plans are to address that strain.
Questions? Thank you very, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you for testimony that applies to our purview.
Our purview. Any other comments? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Cooley. I'm a Concord resident, and I'm here in two capacities. One, just to concur with Cassie Cameron, who just spoke, and also Rebecca in pink. I'm a, I'm a community health nurse. And if there was also something that was data-driven, it's public health. And I think that here, the data on property development is your purview, but it does dovetail with public health, public safety, and public welfare. So I'm not going to go into that because she did such a nice job explaining that. And I'd love to hear from her brother because that would be, I think that's an extremely important point. Also, I know that you have a purview and that you have to stay within that, but this is the only place for community to, for the community to come and participate in a democratic fashion and be heard. So I'm thankful that you're here and listening, and I appreciate that. The other capacity I'm in is a sort of a messenger of messages from the wider community. I am one individual here tonight, but I have come with three hundred and eighty-one petition signatures opposing the casino. And I just want you all to imagine what the room looks behind me if there was three hundred and eighty-one people here tonight and how late you would be staying to hear all the testimony. So we condensed it all here. I'm hoping that you were able to get that email from Concord Green Space. And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna take three people's comments from the front page here and read them because I feel like it's my responsibility to, to represent their voices. From Deborah in Word Seven, "Allowing a casino to be placed near or in low-income neighborhoods away from affluent neighborhoods will bolster the opinion that crime is mostly a low-income problem. The city council would never consider such a complex, such a complex in the South End or West Concord, which are less racially and economically diverse. If you, as a city councillor, and I think they mean planning board member, don't want a casino in your own backyard, don't put it in someone else's backyard, please say no." This project, so from Lynn, "We have, this project introduces high-traffic volumes, potential for gambling addictions, higher need for first responder services, and opening for organized crime. It would not amplify any of the qualities that make me love this city. Beautiful green spaces, community solidarity, and a protective stance towards our environment." And I'll just grab this from Ruth. "Gambling diverts needed resources from children and families. Also, there are other ways nonprofits can raise funds that don't have a negative impact on folks who are already struggling with inflation, low wages, and lack of healthcare." And it goes on. I'll leave this for you and for the record. I also urge you to consider the market analysis that was proposed by Ms. Cameron. I thank you for your time and service.
If you could just give that to Jose, we'll scoot it around here for, make it part of the record. Yeah.
So I, I received your email, like, too late to do anything with. And then we had problems with our internet earlier this evening. But I can forward your email to the board members. I just wasn't able to do that before this meeting.
And I encourage you to read them because all And I encourage you to read them, because although some of the comments are, you know, of moral stance or of the things that are outside the planning purview, there are a lot of comments that have concerns about what you do have purview over. So it's worth reading, because these are people who civic engagement is already, there's so many barriers for people, and we know that, and so they can't get here to make these comments. So I think it's important just to, to take a look. Thanks.
Well, thank you for your testimony, and your 381 petition, 381 nae petition. Anybody else? No? Do you want to close the public hearing? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. How do you want to proceed as far as moving information over to the applicant?
So staff has made the recommendation, the applicant has asked that we not table the application. I suggested tabling, because I didn't know how long this study would take. I'm fine if they, the recommendation to postpone it to the April 19th meeting is fine as well to me. If they're not done, they'll just have to request a continuance until the next meeting. But so anyway, staff is, is recommending that we postpone or continue the application, sorry, to the April 19th meeting to allow the applicant an opportunity to produce an emergency services impact analysis.
And have we provided, have we provided you guys enough information? You're good? Okay. Mr. Corin, give us an okay. Yes.
Yeah, just because it was brought up a couple of times by, by folks, or they were brought up a couple of times by folk, folks. I, I assume that it's not within our, our realm of decision-making to ask for a public health review, but...
You can ask, you can ask for anything you want. You can ask for a market analysis, you can ask for a public health review. The, the public services, the emergency services, you know, struck a particular chord for all the reasons that people have said.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
But yes, you can ask for any, either of those things.
I just don't know. I, I am in favor of a market analysis. I think a market analysis is, is very valuable to, to dictate the use of the property. I don't know that it's in our purview to do that or to do a public service.
You can do both, both of them. A market analysis, I believe, is literally outlined in the site plan regulations. But the site plan regulations have, have, has language that basically says, any information that you need to help you in evaluate your decision, you can request.
I am, I am concerned and, and curious about the sustainability of the project. As, as been mentioned, it's the largest hotel that would be built in Concord in Phase Two. It's an extremely large facility in a market that may very well be saturated. So, so I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels. I'm curious about it.
Yeah, so let's take them one at a time. So if we can look at, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, if I could. I mean, we don't make somebody do a market analysis when they want to put another gas station or another CVS in town, because that...
In the wrong spot.
We are not up here to determine what more can go in the city, in my opinion. You know, we didn't, you know, if, if Walgreens came in, you didn't ask them that there was a CVS right across the street, and back then the Naltz Pharmacy was still there. We didn't say, hey, give us a market analysis to show that that, that area is not saturated. So I'm assuming the applicant's done their due diligence. They have an existing facility in the community. They know what the need is. I'm not sure a market analysis really helps us in the decision. I think, go ahead, Heather, I can see you have your hand up.
Well, I want to hear the rest of what you got to say.
So I just, while I understand, I hear, I hear, I hear what people are saying, and I understand it. We don't define the uses. We're not here to say, we don't need another McDonald's, we don't need another this, we don't need another that. So I'm just...
But we do have some latitude in this.
I'm not saying we don't. No, no, no. I, and I just want to make sure that if we're defining it, we're defining it for the right reasons. It's not for us necessarily to say, is this development going to work? We don't ask anybody to just come forth and say, hey, are you sure this is going to last 50 years?
Yeah, but it's a unique...
It is. Did we ask for a market analysis when the mall went in?
I don't know.
I wasn't here. I'm just saying, but, you know, I'm just...
I'm going to say, yes, we did, but I don't...
But, but I...
I just, I just want to say...
John Regan's here, he might know.
I, I, I just wanted to respond to your point, because like, you, Council Champlain specifically said hotels, which I think is interesting, because we do have hotel owners coming to us saying, what else can I do here? Because I can't make, you know, the hotel business is not working. So we, that's an actual example of one where it might be true that, you know, that we don't have need for that. But to your point that, you know, we don't do this, we don't know that. We haven't done it since I've been here, but that doesn't mean that it's not a good idea to do it.
And I'm not, I'm just asking the need, because we have, how many grocery stores in this community? You know, did we do a market analysis every time one came in to say, do we need another?
As you can imagine, that, that a lot of, a lot of opinions, and, and I walk Main Street quite often, and I, I hear quite often from people of different, different opinions. And I had someone that was in favor of the casino come up to me the other day and say, do you know that most of the CVSs and Walgreens and Rite-Aids are 40,000 square feet? And Nick, or someone, correct me if I'm wrong, is that your proposed square footage? So if you walk inside a, a Rite-Aid and look around from wall to wall, it's about 40,000 square feet. And, and I thought, in my own mind, it was much bigger than this, as we were talking about.
You were thinking Walmart, not Walgreens.
And this person said, yeah, you know, it's not a 75,000-square-foot market basket, it's a 40,000-square-foot building. So I, you know, whether it fails or not, or it's successful or not, it's a 40,000-square-foot building that a lot of people might find useful in different capacities.
I, I'd love to hear what the rest of the, of the board members say. I will just say that part of my concern, with my city council hat on, is that we were, we are rapidly running out of developable land in this city, and we therefore need to maximize. So we have a 13A speaker parcel, which is going to be taken up by, by, by this facility. I want to make sure it's going to be successful if, in fact, we're, I mean, because, again, there's, there aren't very many more places for us to put major developments.
To, what's the, yeah, sorry, I mean, go ahead.
So I have a question, and it maybe Matt may be able to help.
Pull it closer, pull it closer.
So I asked this a couple of meetings back, and I don't feel like I got a very clear answer, but maybe as a city representative, for the owner who already has the license at the draft and opens a second location, would that person be required, Mr. Sanborn, be required to then release all gaming at the draft if he opens, or is he allowed to have two in the city premises or in the city limits? And is that even allowed? I mean, for me, I don't really want two, but I just was curious. Is the, is his license only for one location, or would they, would he then be allowed to have two locations in the city of Concord?
And it just, I mean, I, we're a little...
And I know that's not...
And I don't know if you're comfortable doing that or not. I mean, we closed the public hearing, so I don't know that we want to maybe address that to staff, and, and since we're not going to make a decision tonight, address that question to staff. I'm sure Allison got that note, and, and then get an answer for you and come back. I'd, I'd feel more comfortable doing that than, than asking Mr. Walsh to step into something that he's...
My apologies.
No, that's fine. And it's a great question. I just, I just want to address it through the channel and then have it on the record, and then have it answered in the same capacity. So, does that see another, Suzanne?
No, I, I kind of agree with Jeff.
That there doesn't need to be a market?
No, I think that it's, you know, it's not really our purview. I think that the person who's building it, like, you know, how about a housing development? Well, of course, everybody needs, but it's just like, it's their business, whether or not they think it's going to be successful.
Okay. So what's the, what's the board's, what's the board's favor? I'm, I'm, I think we, it's in our purview, and I think I'd like to ask for a market study or a market analysis. And I don't need to make a motion on it, just to show hands, but if you're, if you're in favor of that, can I see a show of hands? And, and opposed, so, so we can't do that. How about a mental health capacity?
Public health.
Public health, sorry, public health.
Impact.
Impact. Okay.
What's the purview of that? I just...
Again, it's not, it's in, both, we can, we can ask for that information without overstepping our bounds here. You could ask for anything. David?
Well, you know, what I'm thinking is that there's, the line is not hard and fast here. It is not in our purview to determine the viability of a business, you know, and I agree with Byron on that. That if he fails, he fails, and if he doesn't...
40,000-square-foot building, somebody's going to...
Great for us, you know, all, but overall, I've also heard the comments from certain individuals, and, you know, I'm not holding myself up as a moral kind of guy at all, you know?
I hold you up all the time, David.
You're a bullsh...
Okay.
Anyway, I'm so, I just want to make my point is that we're not here to determine viability.
Heather?
I, I, I just wanted to, your conversation about the, if you go into CVS or Rite-Aid, that is not true. I have not found one, I'm looking right now. The, the Big Lots, that is 40,000 square feet.
Big Lots?
The Big Lots. You know, where Big Lots is by Target.
Best Buy, next to Best Buy.
Next to Best Buy. That is 40,000 square feet. It's larger than Best Buy. So the CVS down on Main Street is 12,000 square feet.
Well, that's tiny.
Yeah. So that is not, I just wanted to correct that, because it's absolutely not 40,000 square feet of CVS or Rite-Aid.
Rite-Aid on South?
No, it's, yeah, 12,000 square feet.
Rite-Aid on South?
Or, no, I'm sorry, the CVS on, on...
Corner of Hall.
Yes, the CVS on the corner of Hall, which I consider...
12,000 square feet?
Correct. According to our GIS. But Big Lots, Big Lots is...
Job Lot? You talk about Job Lot?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ocean State Job Lot.
I don't shop there. The Big Lots store.
Cancel that.
Yeah, Ocean State Job Lots is 40,000 square feet.
Okay, so, just so we can get, so we can move along, so we can move along here. So, Heather, can you kind of summarize, other than, that's it, we're looking for the municipal services study?
That's what staff has recommended.
That's what staff's recommending. No other, you've got answers to everything else, water, turning, everything else has been...
It's not, we don't have answers. They're pending.
They're pending.
Waiting on water.
Waiting on water, but I meant, so, yeah.
Do you need a motion, Mr.?
I would love a motion, Byron, to help me get along here.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing to, until the April 19th. Is that, that's the correct date? Planning board meeting with the expectation that we'll receive an emergency services impact assessment from the applicant at that time for evaluation by the staff and the board.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been made. A second and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. We'll see everybody next month. Don't all leave. We still have stuff on our agenda. We've got a whole bunch of stuff left here. We've got four, five, six more items.
Oh, no.
That everybody else is waiting for. All right, let's read, let's read item 7D into our agenda if we could.
The State of New Hampshire Department, can everyone take your comments outside, please? Because it's really difficult for us to hear up here when they're not listening to me at all.
They're not listening.
7D is the State of New Hampshire Department of Administration of Services on behalf of the Department of Health and Human Services, requesting non-binding review under RSA 67454 for a new two-story structure with a footprint of 31,115 square feet for the purpose of a forensic psychiatric hospital at 36 Clinton Street in the Institutional District.
My name is Keith Hemingway. I'm with the Division of Public Works. And with me is Melissa Flynn. She's a civil engineer from SMRT Architects and Engineers. And we're just, we're here to basically acquaint you with our, the project. I'm sure you've seen the documents that were submitted. We have a short slide deck, if you will. We could show you.
Yes, that's there, USB.
Just to familiarize you with the project, we have received your engineering review comments, and we're working our way through that, and we'll, we're preparing to respond to those in the next couple of weeks.
Technology. Sorry.
It's okay. So we don't want to take up a lot of your time.
Except it's taking me this whole time.
Well, we want to hear everything you got on this.
You want a staff update while we...
Yes, why don't we do that? Let's do a staff update if we can.
I didn't mean to blindside you.
I know, I wasn't prepared for a staff update.
I actually have a question.
Get it yet?
Keith Hemingway. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
I, I have a question. I'm not sure if you're authorized to speak on this behalf, but one of the recommendations that we had was about the, not in, not in this, on the property, on the northern side of the property adjacent to Pleasant Street, we had asked if there could be some kind of easement or something given to the city in conjunction with this project, because we would like to put a sidewalk there. There is none there. However, right-of-way will probably be needed from the state to be included in part of future CIP projects. So I don't know who to talk to about that. It was suggested to me to bring it up at the planning board meeting and to let the board know that, you know, the city does need, well, it would be very difficult for us to construct a sidewalk along Pleasant Street on the northern side of this property without some type of easement or something from the state.
Sure.
So that is a humble request, if it's something that could be worked into this process or discussed in some way.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can, we can include it in this project, because it's, it's quite a, quite a ways, it's on the other side of the campus, and that's not, that's not DHHS property.
It's not, I'm sorry?
It's not DHHS property. I think it's, it's under DAS.
Oh, I see, a different entity of the state.
Right. I mean, I can pass it up through the chain.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Or at least get us a person to talk to, because it's, 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 it's an issue now with a new project that's going in over there, another gas station that's going in on the corner. It'd be great to be able to, to tie everything together. I mean, you can't put a, so crosswalk over into that area and then not have one to go anywhere else. So you can't get across the street to get on Pleasant Street to walk down over the hill.
Would, would Ted Cooper be the one to speak to about that?
Charlie Arlinghaus would be the...
Charlie Arlinghaus.
Yeah, he's the commissioner for DAS.
Okay, thank you so much.
He would be the one to speak to, yeah.
All right, Beth, you're up.
Thank you for that filibuster.
The slides are ready if you want another minute.
No, it's good.
So, yep, this is RSA 67454. We have provided some comments in our report about the sidewalk as well. Couple of things, there's a drain line that's shown under the building that we're requesting that they relocate for maintenance purposes. If this was a standard project, they would need some waivers and condition-of-use permits for construction of fewer parking spaces, the size of the parking spaces, and the number of trees required. So we're humbly asking for more trees to be planted. And also, we've been working with the Upper Merrimack River Watershed Association, who just did a Turkey River watershed restoration and management plan, and they had some recommendations for this section of Bow Brook. So we're also asking that they implement those recommendations that have been put forth for the protection of that watershed. And that's it.
Okay. And again, you guys are, you guys, introduce yourselves. So you're on.
Great.
Great. And again, I'm Melissa Flynn. Sorry for the technology issues. Thank you for the password. That's literally right in front of my face that I...
It's fine.
As, as Keith said, I'm the civil engineer on the project, but I'm with SMRT Architects and Engineers, so it's a team of full discipline, full, not just the site person. That's, you're just lucky enough to have me tonight. So we will slide through these very quickly, because it is 9:42. Just a quick timeline, we've had, and Keith will may mention this later, but we've been pretty open with the public and had five public meetings to date to get their input of the neighbors and everything like that. We're currently in the bidding phase of this, of this project with construction going out the next two years. And so I'm going to take a really quick fly through the site. Again, we are at the Concord SOPS campus. We are located at where that dashed yellow line is, is where our site is proposed. Again, getting you oriented from the plan view side, Pleasant Street to the north, Clinton Street to the south, South Fruit Street to the west, and South Spring Street to the east. And again, our, our site is just that little yellow wedge. And then, so this is that kind of zoom-in of that southern part of the campus, and the blue is, is our addition. So again, we're really trying to keep that disturbance of the project within that Loop Road. So as you can see, there's the Loop Road that goes all the way around the entire campus. We're really trying to keep our, our disturbance as close as possible in that area. Again, just the aerial of the existing, and then our great design team has put together this aerial, trying to just conceptually put where some of the neighbors' houses, the close neighbors are, and what the relation is to... and what the relation is to the, the new building. Again, this is focusing in on our, our entrance and what our addition is, and again, I'm going to fly through this very quickly, so we're going to look at four areas around the building. The first one is this, the entry up here, so this is the rendering, 'cause we're going to be maintaining the existing maintenance, the existing main entrance during construction and utilizing that as the existing main entrance. So, the, the portion on the right is the new addition, and the portion on the left is the existing hospital. And then, just a little zoom in, plan view, this is a new turnaround since we will be displacing the existing driveway, we'll be relocating the, the flagpoles and the light poles within here, we have checked the truck turning radius, so a fire truck can still get through here, and then some, um, kind of informal gathering areas and seating just adjacent to the building for staff and visitors. Since it is a secure site, you do need to check in and go through, so sometimes you may be waiting for the rest of your group to show up, so we wanted to maintain that accessibility for the hospital as, the staff as well. And again, just some, some pretty pictures of what the things that we're going to be proposing for granite planters, reusing the granite benches that are, that are there now, and the, the granite block benches that will also serve as vehicle barriers in lieu of the large planters that are out there right now. And then, some of the, again, really enhancing the, the landscaping in that area, there are two mature trees that we're proposing to save, and one of the notes from earlier was about native plants. We have a landscape architect on the project, so all of the plants we've selected are, are native to New Hampshire, and we know will thrive in this environment. So, again, just taking a little quick look again at that rendering, and again, I am not the, the architect on it, but these are just some of the materials that we'll be using on this new addition, some veneer cultured stone, and then phenolic, am I saying that right?
Yeah, phenolic.
Phenolic, which is just a, a hard resin manufactured, a really rugged and durable material that comes in all shapes, or shades and grains and things like that, so we're, we're not trying to match the existing hospital, but we're just trying to complement it.
Bless you.
So, again, here's just a picture of the existing hospital, and then our materials are the ones on the right, and then that little, little snippet right here is, uh, is the existing ones. So, again, just a quick look down, um, kind of the, the main entrance that is existing right there, right now, those two driveways are, are going to be maintained. Then, again, another view from the parking lot to the left, kind of looking right towards that middle, uh, main entrance area. So, just going to take a kind of quick ride around the, down the west elevation, so this fenced area that's screened is the admissions, um, area, so that'll be used not very frequently, it is quite a steep slope right here, so, but what we've learned from the hospital, that it's going to be a, a not, not frequently used entrance for admitting patients. So, then, moving along the, this outer courtyard, which is kind of the closest thing that is to the loop road, there's going to be oak planks and this mesh screen, these will be very small, so you can't pass anything through it, it's all secure, um, secure hardware to keep those inside safe and those outside walls still having an appealing, um, aesthetic. This, this picture at the lower right is an example, one we've done on another project, we're actually proposing a cantilever on that top little section along here, um, and as the rendering elevation right here shows, that there's a kind of a random pattern to just break up that big mass of, of elevation. So, coming around to the, the south side, the south elevation, and this is really where you can, is going to be the main part that you can see from the, the sidewalk, again, we're, we're proposing a lot of plants, trees, shrubs, all of different levels. This is obviously shown at kind of full bloom and full, full growth, obviously, it's not going to look like that right off the bat, but, but that's the intent. And then, again, see, just again, some native plants that we're proposing, some fragrance and things like that, that enhance the, the, the use of the area outside as well as the, the patients when they're using the courtyard. And then, coming around the corner to the, the loading dock, um, this is looking directly east, so we have our, our new generator with the retaining wall to the, the right here, and then there's three-tiered retaining walls with, with plantings on each of those different steps, and those are kept at less than thirty inches, so there, there won't be any railing or anything, that's all for just aesthetics. And to build up that, since the, the first floor, obviously, the, the topography of this is that it falls back towards the loading dock, so there's a couple catch basins and a trench drain that, that we'll be replacing because they don't operate, um, all that well right now, so we'll be fixing that. But it does have a significant, probably a four or five foot grade change from this, this left, um, page left to right, um, area. Again, just some photos of the examples of types of blocks we might use, it'll just be a modular segmental retaining wall, and then the, um, the plantings that we're proposing. And then, here's a photo, the, the generator is going to be pretty much a carbon copy of what the hospital has on the other side of their campus, so that's what the picture on the right is. Again, there's just a photo of the existing, um, loading dock to get, uh, you guys oriented with the, the site. So, as you can see, it, it slopes down pretty significantly from where the photographer is standing right here. And then, again, taking that, that rendering that we had from before, um, we took this photograph and, and spliced in the, the hospital, the, uh, south elevation here with the, so this is the fence, and then all of our plantings and our, our fun transformer, which will probably take about two years, as was noted in that first, um, in that first presentation this morning, today. Again, and then just another view of that, um, that, that south elevation from the, so the, the person taking this picture is pretty much standing in Bow Brook right now, right at the corner of the courthouse.
So, is that, is that piece that's over to the right that you can see more clearly, is that new?
That's the loading dock.
Or is that old?
Uh, that is the existing, that's the existing loading dock, right where that, that truck is. And so, this, this tree, um, right here is existing, um, that we're, we're doing our best to save, um, we're trying to keep all of our, our disturbance as much as possible in board of that, within the canopy and the, keep the roots, um, keep the roots in, in good condition. And so, on that, again, I just wanted to give you a quick tour around, not, this was included in our application, but, um, it's, it's a little better when it's not, not possibly on, on your screens, so, and to, to mention the, um, the comments we are addressing and reviewing those, and obviously, we're welcome to, to have further discussions with some of those ones, like the, the storm drain and the, the traffic is, is, or the sidewalk, as Keith mentioned. So, I guess we'll open it up to any comments that you guys have had while reviewing the application.
Yeah, so, uh, water, flow through water on the other side, so I just, I live downstream from this on, on Harvard Street, so right, literally right across the street and down the middle of Harvard Street, the water, to my knowledge, goes underneath the culverts all the way to right behind my house.
Okay.
All the way from, from this, the little detention pond area that's there, goes underneath Clinton Street, goes underneath the house, the back of the house at the end of Clinton Street, and then, it doesn't come out until it comes up behind my house. And it, it, ninety percent of the year, it's fine, but it's not fine in the spring, every spring it floods, every spring it's underwater, the end of the, the end of the pond is underwater, probably a good three feet of water. And I don't know what can be done downstream from where you are, but if this changes the flow at all, it, it, it going to change the amount of water that's coming through there?
Um, no, no, and that's, um, I guess I should, probably should have started, that we have our application into, um, DES, and we've received our initial, um, comments from AOT, so they're reviewing the stormwater. The, the, one of the, the beauties of trying to keep it within that loop road, we actually, and the note about the parking waiver, um, we aren't adding any parking, so part of our due diligence at the beginning of this was looking at the entirety of the, the Sops Campus and discovered that there is ample parking available at multiple times during the day, that staff now needs to walk four or five minutes instead of parking right next to the, the building, but we're, we're not adding any impervious parking areas. So, and we're removing, we're kind of putting this on top of two existing parking bays, so we're losing about a hundred parking spaces, and we're taking out about three thousand, or thirty thousand square feet of impervious pavement, and we're putting in a thirty-one thousand square foot building. So, we are treating that building for storeboard quality per the DES standards with infiltration galleys that will collect that roof runoff and then will outlet to, um, Bow Brook, so that will be, um, enhanced, or will be expanded a little bit, but nothing, the, the flows that are leaving the site are not going to be increased at all, like that's, we will be meeting the, the AOT standard, um, and we were, again, we're working through those comments right now, Michael had a few, just to, to clarify on the modeling, but we'll make sure that, that that is, is met.
Okay. And the, the, the type of facility, just again, for the record, so we've got a facility that's there, it handles this, what's the new facility, what's the difference between existing facility and new facility?
The, um, yeah, the existing facility is a psychiatric hospital. The addition is, is, uh, the only difference is that it's, um, it's qualified as a forensic facility, forensic psychiatric hospital, so that patients that, um, need psychiatric help, but they need to be detained for, either for a short time before they have a court case, or for an extended period of time if they're sentenced, so that they can get continuous treatment, psychiatric treatment while they're being detained. So, it is secure, but we did everything we could to make sure that it doesn't look like a prison.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, yeah, and even the fence around the courtyard, we, we didn't use razor ribbon or anything, that's, that was a, um, you know, a very important requirement that we had from the beginning, and I think SMRT has done a good job of making that work.
So, if I'm not mistaken, in the, in the existing facility, you've got a way to, to securely move patients out of an ambulance or a, a, a vehicle that they come in, there's going to be one, there's going to be a port here as well?
Yeah, she, she.
I saw it, I saw it, and it showed there on the elevation, and that's where it's kind of tarped off, and that's the one that's going to be used for that, right? I know you said it wasn't going to be used often, but.
Yes.
I think it would be used often, won't it?
Well, there's only twenty-four beds here, so there, there's not going to be a huge movement.
In and out daily, daily years. But if twenty-four beds, twenty-four people are going to come initially, it's just a matter of how, okay, I got you, okay, that was, that was what confused me.
They'll be moving from the existing hospital into this section, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Yes?
I just wanted to, um, support the, um, staff's recommendation to increase the perimeter shade tree planting around the parking lots that doesn't currently exist if you're going to be using them for your parking in lieu of building more parking. And to, I like to emphasize shade trees, native shade trees.
Yeah. We, um, I mean, we don't, we don't expect to be adding a lot of landscaping beyond the scope of this project. You know, perhaps if the bids come in low enough and we have some extra money, we could certainly talk to the hospital about doing that, but, since we're not, we're not adding parking, we're actually taking away parking and actually moving the cars farther away, that there is, there's a lot of parking areas adjacent to the, the hospital that are currently not used by the hospital, but we're, um, we're, and, and they're working on a plan to use those areas like the, uh, the parking garage at the Brown Building, which is currently used about fifty percent capacity, and using that and possibly shuttling, uh, staff back and forth, um, so that we're not increasing the parking area.
The only time that parking lot's full is July fourth, the night.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's full.
Yeah.
And to answer your question about the, this area that's right next to, I think this is lot F, um, this is a apple orchard that, um, we intentionally are, again, we're not on that side of, of the campus doing any work, and that's all well-developed and well-established. And we also have a wetland that runs right along this, um, this part of the loop road right there, so that wouldn't be an ideal place, as the, the other civil engineer had mentioned, I mean, we, we don't want to add the roots into that, so this, this dashed line right here, there is some kind of natural, um, plantings that are, that have kind of taken over that area, and there are each, it's hard to see on this plan, but each, all of these little dots are, are well-mature trees.
So, I just wanted to point out, I think the staff said that the, the shade of trees provides relief from the, the heat effect of asphalt.
Yes, the heat island effect, yeah.
So, you know, the other stuff is not as important, but you might want to consider sacrificing some of the shrubs that are in beds scattered around and maybe just put in four or five trees.
Yeah, and the, the islands, the planted islands along here, there are probably two or three mature tall trees that are within the, the planted portions.
Do you have a plan for protecting them, or are you just hoping that?
Um, we aren't even, the, construction isn't even on that side of the campus.
But the one that you're trying to protect?
Oh, yes, we, we have, yes, we're using the, the city's detail for the.
Protection of the plants.
Yep, for the tree protection.
All right, I want to move along if we can, Jeff, did you have a quick question?
Yeah, I didn't see any striping or signing on your plan, and I was out there and kind of, it's all faded, um, and you're realigning kind of that roadway. Used to be they went in ninety degrees, the existing road, and now you're kind of making the inbound a sweeping kind of left turn. When you come out of there, people's instinct may not be to take the sharp right, so I think you need to put some centerline striping, some do not enter signs, some one-way, make it very clear that's not here.
Okay.
And I also noticed that you have nothing that tells people it's one-way around your drop-off area. I actually watched a car start to go in the wrong way.
Well, I think currently it is two-way, I think you, it's wide enough for, I don't know, anyone would advise.
But there's no signing, I don't see any sign that's suggesting it's one-way. I see arrows drawn on a plan, but there's no indication those are permanent pavement markings, I'm thinking they're just more of, to give us an impression of what the road's supposed to be, not physically to tell the driver.
Correct. Yeah, and there, there, so there is, um, those will be painted on the, the arrows, there will be a sign, um, for, for do not enter, and then one-way for around here, it just, it probably didn't get, it got lost in the, in the shuffle of the probably eighty plans that we gave you, but we can certainly, uh, highlight those for you. And, and again, to the, the Sally Port, um, admissions area as well, that'll be a do not enter for the public. So, so we'll, we'll make sure to clarify that.
Could you zoom into that corner by the Sally Port, 'cause I was just wondering, is there any way to kind of have that crosswalk go more ninety degrees across the driveway from the Sally Port instead of this long angular, is that kind of, I don't know if you, these plans can, see, you've got it following the road?
Yes.
Is there any way to make it closer to ninety and then bring it along the building rather than have the pedestrians walking that long around the edge of the roadway?
Yes, we can look at that, it's a, like, as I noted, it's about a nine to ten, um, grade, or percent pitch on that, which the civil engineer in me was really, really hesitant to do that, but we're working on an existing site, and as Keith said, it's the use of it. So, it, the grade changes pretty significantly on that side slope, so I don't know if we'd be able to.
But your driveway doesn't drop nine or ten percent into the Sally Port, correct?
It's, it's actually going up.
The driveway goes up.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, I, I hear what you're saying, but the proposed grading does not prevent you from building crosswalk more than ninety, because your driveway is not ten percent. What you're saying is the new building, so it might just mean moving the ballers that you have along the back a little bit, is what I, I'm just trying to understand, it's not the Sally Port driveway that's the issue, it's between the edge of the, there and the face of the building that you're having a grading question?
Yep, I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, I want to open it up to the public, see if there's any public testimony, anybody have any questions or concerns about this application? Carol?
Can I just make a quick comment? Um, I appreciate that the shrubs that were selected appear to be native shrubs, but I also note that, that some of them are. that, that some of them are dry site shrubs and some of them are pretty wet site shrubs. So, I'm, I'm not sure if you have that gradient of soil moisture and just wanna make sure that whatever they're, they're putting in are gonna be in appropriate sites and survive and thrive.
Yes, yeah, then the, the area, the plantings around the, the middle, like, there are some that are in planters, um, so that's like kind of all of those pictures where, um, but then again, around the edge of the loop road down there is, is pretty wet.
It's pretty wet, so, good place for spice bush.
Okay, I didn't see any public, any hands for public testimony, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, do we need to do anything?
Thank you.
You got comments and concerns and thank you for the, appreciate the visuals, they helped a lot, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and we'll be in touch to get those, those last, uh, a formal response back for those comments.
Thank you for the advice on being able to reach out to somebody on the other side of the campus for the sidewalk. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to seven E in our agenda.
Stan Tech, on behalf of Public Service Company of New Hampshire, request five conditional use permits to replace utility pools along the C one eight-nine, M one oh-eight and G one four-six lines, uh, including for disturbance of wetland buffer, disturbance bluff buffer, disturbance of flood hazard zone, disturbance in the shoreline protection district and uses permitted by CUP. Uh, the project takes place in open space, medium density, high density residential, uh, gateway performance industrial and office park districts. Staff, this is essentially a duplicate application for what occurred previously. We didn't have any issues or questions, we worked through everything with them. Concom was in support of, of everything. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Nope. We have no issues with this.
Okay, uh, no issues, I don't know if we need anything, but welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Yeah, Tom Tatro, Stan Tech Consulting, on behalf of Eversource. Yeah, like you said, it's a kind of carbon copy of the previous couple CUPs you've seen and try and take advantage of active construction going out there now, so.
And you're lucky to be on the end of the agenda, 'cause I'm gonna ask the board if they have any questions or concerns about this application? No? We'll ask the audience if anybody in the audience has any questions or concerns. If not, we'll move right along and see what we got for recommendations here, which is, uh, again, it's a carbon copy, we've been through this before with you, so, uh, two point one is to grant the following conditional use permits in the existing utility right-ofway for Eversource and it's outlined there with the different CUPs that are requested. Uh, would someone like to make a mo, and subsequent conditions, just to note that, uh, subsequent conditions, one, two and three, would someone like to make a motion to grant the following conditional use permits with those subsequent conditions as outlined?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, you're good. See, you waited all that time just for that.
It was worth it.
Sorry.
Glad you were entertained.
All right, let's move on. Seven F in the agenda, Granite State Engineering LLC, if we could read that into the record?
Uh, yes, Granite Engineering, on behalf of Amiskeg Real T L C, request major site plan approval for construction of a thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square foot building addition, a new five thousand square foot building and two conditional use permits, uh, for disturbance to wetland buffers in the shoreline protection district at one three eight Hall Street and the I N industrial district. Uh, this was previously determined to complete and the development of regional impact. They already actually went to Bow and got their approvals, uh, and I don't know if you want an update or if there's anything?
We do, we'd love a staff update on this.
Sure, so, yep, the Bow approval was conditioned on Concord approval.
As it should be.
As it should be. They are requesting a few waivers regarding parking lot aisles and driveway widths and this is to accommodate the type of vehicles, I'm sure they'll get into that. Um, and also sidewalks are required, they are at the end of the line on Hall Street, so they are requesting to pay an escrow to get a waiver to not build the sidewalks at this time and instead pay towards the city escrow for that. There's conditional use permits for, um, wetland buffer and shoreline protection district, they went to Conservation Commission last week and they had no issues and recommended approval for that as well. And I apologize, I put the wrong elevations in the agenda, I put the.
For God's sakes.
Section that's in Bow, not the section that's in Concord. So, Jeff will be showing you the correct building tonight.
We'll take care of that.
So, for the record, we'll, uh, be looking at a different set that's in our plans. Welcome to the table, if you guys could state your names to the record?
Yeah, uh, good evening to the board for the record, my name is Jeff Merritt, I'm an engineer with Granite Engineering, we are the civil site engineers for the project. I have a few people with me this evening. Uh, to my right, the board's left is Zach Denault. Zach is the delivery operations manager at Amiskeg Beverages. Amiskeg Beverages is the applicant and the owner for the project. And then to his right, uh, is Brent Cole, also an engineer from Granite Engineering. And then in the audience is Denise and Steve Langley, uh, from Langley Construction, they'll be the construction managers for this project. Uh, so what we have for the board this evening is a site plan application, then there are two associated conditional use permit applications. One conditional use permit application is relative to impacts to the shoreline district and then the other one is relative to impacts to the wetland buffer. All three applications are for the property at five ten Hall Street. This is where Amiskeg Beverages is located. For any of you that don't know what Amiskeg Beverages does, they are a, um, beverage distribution company, they do warehousing and distribution of all types of beverages throughout the state of New Hampshire. We have the unique opportunity to actually be working in two different municipalities. The municipal boundary between Concord and Bow, uh, runs right through our property. Uh, so we have two properties in Bow that we're working on and then we have two in Concord and half the operations in Bow and half the operations in Concord. I highlighted a plan up on the screen there, um, just to kind of walk you through how it exists today. Uh, if you can look and see this kind of yellow shaded property right here, uh, this property is in Bow, it's, um, over, it's just south over the property line. Um, that property, you see the big, um, brown building on it, that's the existing warehouse facility that's out there today. Uh, that's one of the properties we're working on and then you see this, um, kind of bluish shaded, uh, building right here next to Hall Street, or excuse me, sh, blue shaded parcel next to Hall Street. Uh, that's a vacant lot that's out there, used to have a house on it, um, and actually a little corner of the building as it exists today, um, pokes into that property. And then this kind of blue line or magenta line that you see on the plan, um, that is the municipal boundary, so everything north of that is Concord, everything south of that, of course, is Bow. In Concord, again, we have two parcels, this red parcel, um, that is lot three, that's developed today. Um, what's out there today on that parcel is the distribution side of the business, so, uh, your fleet storage, your tractor trailer trucks, your box trucks, some employee parking, um, and then a site driveway off of Hall Street. So, that's really kind of the, uh, distribution side of the business. Uh, on the south side of the big brown building you see on the plan there, that's the administrative side of the building, so there's a driveway up there, um, and there's some parking up there, but that's not the distribution side, it's the, it's the office side of it. And then the last property in Concord that we're proposing work on is the one that's shown in green. Um, that property is largely undeveloped, if you've been by there, it, it looks like a big, um, grass lawn, um, I think they played soccer on it for years out there.
Softball.
Softball, a little bit of every sport, I think. Um, so that's the fourth and final property that makes up the overall tract area of, of about twenty-one and a half acres. The property in Bow, located entirely within the limited industrial district, Concord, uh, the majority of it is located in the industrial district except for a swath actually on the, on the west side, uh, which is located within the open space residential zone. There's a little, there's a little.
A little more complicated.
Hey, we, we got every single line you can imagine out here on this, uh, on this plan, but, so, most of it's in the correct zone and there's, for whatever reason, a, a sliver out there that's in the residential zone. So, part of this project had us go to the zoning board, uh, we received, uh, two variances, um, both for working within the residential district for an industrial use, one was for lot coverage and one was for the physical use itself. So, just to let the board know that we have secured that. Uh, the proposal and the why we're here tonight, um, is that we have a project which, uh, reorganizes the distribution side of the business. This really is an, an expansion of the facility so much as it is a reorganization of how it operates today. Um, what's going on and, and, and what has plagued, um, Amiskeg Beverages for years now is their inbound product, the product that they receive and put into their warehouse and then redistribute, all comes in through a single loading dock on the very, um, west side of the existing building. There's only one door and they receive, uh, millions and millions of cases through a single door. Um, and so it, it causes, um, some logistic issues getting the product into the building in a timely manner. So, this whole project revolves a bit around fixing that problem and as we do that, we are able to fix some other issues on-site, um, as well. So, you'll see on the Bow side, you see this red, uh, L-shaped, um, shape on the, on the plan here, that's a proposed building addition, um, it's about thirteen thousand square feet in area. To install that, we actually have to tear down some of the existing buildings, so the net, you, net additional area really isn't thirteen thousand, it's something less than that. Uh, but what this addition does, it was allow a series of, uh, loading docks to be cut in there along that new, uh, addition face, which would solve the inbound receiving, uh, problems that Amiskeg has right now. Um, you'll also see on the plan in the red lot that, uh, has the distribution side of the business today, we're proposing to reorganize how they store their fleet out there. Um, we've re-striped and, uh, reallocated, um, area for their fleet parking, including their box trucks, which is kind of in the middle here, and then their, uh, tractor trailer trucks and trailers, which would kind of be on the north side of the parking lot. And then also the employee parking, what's out there today is the, there is employee parking, but it's kind of sandwiched between the truck maneuvering area and truck fleet storage area. It's kind of just co-mingled with everything, uh, so we have an opportunity here to separate that out and, um, put it to a side where it's separate from the, uh, the truck traffic there. So, you'll see, um, to the east in that red area, in that red parcel, is, uh, an employee parking lot that we're proposing. And then, uh, also, as you come in off of Hall Street, that entrance that's there today, we're gonna slide it north, uh, about fifty feet, not much, but a little bit, um, and that opens up an area for us to have some truck queuing, um, spaces. And what happens right now is the inbound trucks come in and they kind of queue up haphazardly around the site, um, there isn't a place for them to park, so they just kind of pull over, um, and then they wait for their turn to offload and then they leave. So, this gives them a dedicated space to come in and park, there'll be dispatch from there when it's their turn to, to, um, offload, so we can fix that as well. The last thing that's happening in Concord, you'll see one rectangular red box here, there is one building that we're proposing to build in Concord, it's a five thousand square foot building. Um, this building is a little bit different, it, it doesn't store the beverages, rather it stores the merchandising equipment in paraphernalia that they use to sell the, the beverages. So, it's the point of sales material, that is, things like coolers, um, retail display racks, banners, everything that goes into marketing and, and selling the products. So, this smaller building in Concord is accessed by the, um, sales, uh, staff as opposed to the warehousing staff, allows the salesman to drive through the building, load up their pickup or their, um, SUV car, whatever it is, and, um, take the material to a store. Uh, in terms of parking, uh, since we only have a real small building in, uh, Concord, our park, our technically our parking for what's in Concord is really low, what we need is like, I believe, four or five spaces, um, obviously we have way more than that. If you were to put this entire building in, all this use in Concord, including the big brown building that's out there today, you'd need about a hundred and fifty-six spaces, we have two hundred and nine shown on the plan. So, even if this was all, you know, even if that municipal boundary was moved south, the, the parking ratios would work in the city. Uh, drainage, this facility was built in the early sixties and then it was added on at, at least once in the nineteen eighties. Uh, there's very limited stormwater management out there today. Um, there was a pond that was built in the nineteen eighties that exists today, but other than that, um, there's not a lot out there. What this project will do is it'll fully revamp that, since we're touching all the fleet storage area, um, we're working with the new building addition, we're going to capture all that stormwater, it's gonna be conveyed to a new wet pond, stormwater wet pond and treatment area, um, which is in this, this green area that, um, is kind of west of the new point of sales building. So, we have a fully new stormwater management system, a, a, a significant benefit to the overall, um, uh, area. Uh, it also includes an underground infiltration area in the, uh, employee parking lot, uh, which will be for groundwater recharge. So, in addition to meeting the local requirements with this town of Bow, the city of Concord, uh, we also have to meet the state of New Hampshire alteration to training requirements. Uh, so we have an updated stormwater management plan. Uh, getting into the conditional use permits, I'll just give you a quick overview of those. On the east side of Hall Street, so across the road from us is the Merrimack River, we don't actually have frontage on the river here with this parcel, um, but the river is east of Hall Street. And so, if you take the edge of the river and project two hundred and fifty feet, um, there's a portion, just a, a, a corner of our site here, the entrance off of Hall Street that is within the two hundred and fifty-foot, uh, protected shoreline. And so, we're seeking a conditional use permit to work in that area. Um, the, the work that we're proposing in there is the driveway, which again exists today, but we're gonna relocate it a little bit further to the north. Uh, a little bit of the employee parking lot and then a small section of the truck queuing area. Um, I should note that we are outside the state's fifty-foot waterfront buffer as well as the city's seventy-five foot, uh, buffer. Um, those are actually off the property altogether, they're actually in the right-ofway. So, all of our work is primarily relocated between the one fifty and the two fifty. Um, and again, this is all area that, um, is already used for industrial purposes today, it's part of the, um, the current site plan in terms of access or, or lawn area. Uh, we did meet with the Conservation Commission, um, they reviewed the, both CUPs, uh, they did not have an issue with it and, uh, I think you'll find that they, uh, gave it a favorable recommendation. And then the last conditional use permit is one relative to impacts to a wetland buffer and a wetland on the property. Um, we don't have a lot of wetlands out here, but to our west, our west of butter is actually the railroad right-ofway, a railroad corridor and flanking the railroad corridor is a series of wetlands, um, there's a ditch out there basically and, and it's jurisdictional. So, when you project that, um, wetland buffer onto the site, some of our work is located within that, so we're seeking a CUP to work within a, a limited portion of that buffer. Uh, that particular buffer is from a wetland on the discharge end of the existing stormwater pond, recall, I said that there was a nineteen eighties stormwater pond out there, so the discharge point of it has become hydric and when we, uh, project that buffer onto the property, um, some of our work is within that. Uh, we're proposing to work within the buffer with similar uses that are there today, uh, for example, stormwater management, uh, a little bit of the fleet storage and the outlet for the stormwater system. So, all of the uses that are out there would remain out there, we'd just do it in a, in a better fashion, if you will. And then finally waivers, there's a good summary of it in the staff report, we did submit a few waivers. Um, the first one is section eighteen point oh-seven for parking lot aisle widths. Uh, I know the board is familiar with their regulations, typical lot aisle width is twenty-four feet and I believe the regulations allow that to go up to, um, twenty-five percent more than that if you need, which allows you up to thirty feet, uh, whi, which is completely fine for traditional, uh, vehicles, so cars and, and trucks, passenger vehicles, that's more than adequate. Um, our project proposes or utilizes, um, commercial vehicles that are not standard, so we have tractor trailer trucks and we have box trucks. So, things like twenty-four foot aisles aren't, um, manageable for maneuvering a tractor trailer truck. So, in areas where we need maneuvering width in aisles to get to back into, um, uh, truck spaces, we've shown aisle widths that exceed the thirty feet that's allowed by code. Uh, so we're seeking a, a waiver to allow that on the basis that the commercial vehicles that, uh, use this site today and, and would need to use it in the future, need additional room, um, than the thirty feet that's allowed. I would, um, note to the board that where we have employee parking, which is the traditional type of vehicles that the ordinance contemplated with the twenty-four foot aisles, we've fully complied with the, um, aisle width for those types of vehicles, it's just for the commercial vehicles.
I don't wanna cut you off, but I wanna, I wanna get going here. What else you got?
Um, second waiver is section eight point ten, which is driveway widths, it's the same basis, uh, we have large trucks coming in here, the ordinance requires, the regulations require twenty-five foot radius, we're proposing a fifty foot radius, so that's, so that our tractor trailer trucks aren't driving on the landscaped areas, staying on the asphalt. And then last, um, Beth had touched on this, uh, there's a waiver relative to a sidewalk. Uh, the regulations would ask us to, or require us to put a sidewalk along Hall Street along our frontage, there's no sidewalk out there today, uh, we understand the, maybe one in the future, our discussions with staff was we would prefer to, um, put the money in escrow at this point, it, it didn't seem to. It, it didn't seem too likely that a sidewalk would be extended in this area in the near future. And there's not a lot of pedestrian activity out in this area because of the types of use. So we're, we're asking the board to consider the escrow as opposed to the construction of the sidewalk. That's it.
Does, does Amos Cake Beverage use this entire building?
Yes.
Okay. And, and what's the total, so you got twenty-seven acres. What's the square footage going to be once everything's done in, in the books?
The total square footage of the building post-construction?
And the thirteen docks that you've got now, so you're going to be growing to thirteen docks. Those are inbound and outbound, so all your tractor trailer traffic is going to be going in and out of that?
So the red area is your inbound.
Yeah.
And then outbound is this area over here, I don't know if you can see it on the, on the, there's some covered interior loading docks, so the, the vehicle's actually back into the building.
So all the new docks, all the new build is, is incoming?
Correct. It's to solve that inbound traffic issue.
Alright. And then I saw in one of the conditions that there's a voluntary lot merger application, is that? That's not part of this, right?
No, that's done on a staff level. That's just a requirement that they need to do.
Okay. Alright, and then square footage, what do we get, square footage?
Existing warehouse is two hundred and eighteen thousand square feet and then we're adding thirteen eight to a, a new addition.
Okay, great. Questions from the board, Jeff?
So you talk about making all these nice wide aisles for trucks and everything, but I don't see any truck turns in the plans that we have for your driveway turning in off Hall Street. And given the, you don't meet at a ninety, I'm assuming a large amount of traffic comes from the eighty-nine side? I'm kind of curious how a tractor trailer truck makes a left in if there's a tractor trailer truck sitting there to make a turn out.
So we do have turning templates. We had sent them to engineering, we didn't have them in this plan set, Jeff, but we-
So is engineering reviewing them, comfortable with them?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
So add that as a-
Yeah. I'm still trying to grasp, you say there's not going to be any more traffic, but I see a lot more parking spaces for trucks and cars. How does that equate to not more traffic?
I guess our point was that what we're proposing out here accommodates what's already going on, on-site. It's just in a dedicated area. So it, it accommodates fleet storage that is already on-site. It accommodates tractor trailer trucks that are already being used on-site. It just provides more room for them than what's out there today.
Okay, but are, are you expecting more employees? Because you now can handle more stuff coming in quicker?
I'll let Zach answer that.
No, basically all the changes that we're trying to make are ju- uh, for an efficiency purpose. We're not looking to expand anything, obviously. Business, obvi- everyone wants business to grow, but the flip of the warehouse, the receiving doors and our outgoing doors just makes it for our night selectors. Obviously, this day and age, it's hard to, the labor force is tough. We're trying to retain the help, make it a lot easier process for what they do. And obviously our delivery department, so, but no, we're not looking to exponentially grow, if you will.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's all I had for now.
Questions from the board? Remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Alright, close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Appreciate it.
And for the presentation, any other discussion from the board? If not, we'll move into four, geez, holy cows, a lot here. Four point one. Grant architectural design review application with the condition that the applicant work with staff to address landscaping recommendations to direct views, address lighting concerns and extend the pedestrian walkway along the parking lot. And again, that piece will be struck, so it's, no?
No.
No, architectural design, no, yeah, sorry. So would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design view approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries four point two is to grant the following waivers to the site plan regulations using criteria of RSA six seventy-four forty-four, three E two as guidance. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waivers and the site plan regulations, which are outlined in section eighteen oh seven parking lot aisles and eighteen point one oh driveway widths and twenty-one oh two sidewalk requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries four point three is to grant the following conditional use permits per section twenty-eight four three D of the zoning ordinance to allow for the impacts of a fifty-foot wetland buffer to fill in stormwater pond with the condition that New Hampshire DES approved the wetlands permit and per section twenty-eight three dash three for impact of the Shoreland Protection District to construct a new driveway and parking area. Someone like to make a motion to grant the following conditional use, those, those two conditional use permits?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made in the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and grant, uh, four point four is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a new five thousand square foot standalone building and associated parking improvements. Nothing else on that, parking improvements with the precedent conditions one through six and subsequent conditions one, two, three, four, and five. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, thanks for your testimony and presentation, and we'll move right along.
Suzanne, did you have a nay on the?
No, I said, I just, no, I was late.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Let's read seven G into the record if we could.
Hayner Swanson LLC, on behalf of Brady Sullivan Properties LLC, request major site plan and conditional use permit approval for conversion of existing buildings into an eighty-unit multifamily complex at Eleventh Stickney Ave in the Opportunity Quarter Performance District. This application was previously determined complete. It was continued, or the, the public hearing was postponed from last month. And not a development of regional impact, we recommend you open the public hearing. Short summary from staff?
Yep, have we already had a determination?
Yes, it was determined complete two months ago. There's a number of issues that are outstanding that we are comfortable recommending approval and allowing them to be conditions of approval. They went to ADR and the ADR made some recommendations that, that they're going to try to meet. They're going to share that with you. Sorry, I'm not doing a quick summary. So some of the outstanding things that we, that we are comfortable with conditions of approval pertain to the water infrastructure analysis. So, and there's a-
There's an easement issue, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yes, yeah, we've asked for a number of easements. So they need to provide an easement plan for that. They, I'll let them speak to that as well. They requesting conditional use permit for the mixed-use component. Overall, we worked with them pretty consistently and we don't have any major issues.
Okay.
That'll turn it over.
Welcome to the table, if you could state your names to the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, I'm John Cronin, Cronin, Bisson and Zelinski, representing the applicant. With me is Tom Zajak, seated to my left, your right, from Hayner Swanson, the project engineer, and Chris Lewis, the very talented architect at Brady Sullivan, who has worked on a lot of these adaptive reuses of mill properties. Some of you may have seen the China Mill Down in Allentown, which is nearing completion and it's really been remarkable to watch that go from its former shell into what it is today. Likewise, the Nashua Mill in Severlin, Manchester. So it's kind of an exciting project and certainly will change the aesthetics along the interstate as you go by the former state buildings. I'd also like to thank the planner, Shank, for assisting us. She met with us several times early on with this project to give us a constructive comment and guidance on how to get it to the planning board and get it in the best condition it could be. Just had a little unusual twist in it because of old Stickney. There used to be an old road that was going through this site, right through the middle, and it was relocated by the state to where it is today. But it left some legal issues to be taken care of and City Attorney Kennedy worked with us to get that resolved. We went in and got it discontinued. I noted one of the comments related to making a, a mark on the plan showing up in the northern piece where the park and ride still remains. Our quiet title action did not extend onto state property because we wouldn't have the right to do that. I will note that in that process, there were some questions and concerns between the DOT and various lawyers that because it was a relocation, the old road would be discontinued. Likewise, that the state, because it was a state piece, didn't have to discontinue. I don't think that's germane to this, I'm just saying the note, we can show it as a former old Stickney and it can be up to others if the state says, hey, we don't need to take any discontinuance or that no longer exists. Also, I noted in one of the comments, a deed issue. We didn't work with the closing, but we'll work and make sure that that's corrected. No issue with any of the other comments. One thing that came up related to a dumpster, there's one within a location where a variance will be needed if that's to remain where it is. We looked at trying to relocate it to avoid the need for a variance. But because of the site and the pre-existing buildings, seems where it's cited is the best location for it. So at this point, we feel that we will go forward and try and get the variance. If we don't, of course, we'll have to remove it or relocate it to make it compliant. With that, I'll turn it over to Tom, he can address the, some of the highlights, I know at this late hour, on the engineering.
Before you do, I just, was there a Merrimack River Greenway Trail easement as well that, uh?
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of discussion. I think the, the site that the, the city prefers is not specifically determined, but it went once from the, along the northern boundary. There was some thought about connecting it up that way off of Stickney. Then that changed a little bit more to the south. And we're happy with the condition that says that the applicant will cooperate and assist, or whatever language is acceptable to Attorney Kennedy, uh, Kennedy. And, and you know, that was a precondition, we want to make that work for the city.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you, I'll, I'll be as brief as possible. I'm Tom Zajak, I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson. We're the civil engineers and land surveyors for the project. I'm sure the board is intimately familiar with this property. I'll go quickly through some of the high-level facts before turning things over to Chris Lewis to talk a little bit about the buildings. I brought an aerial photo with me here tonight, which I, I think clearly depicts the status on the ground of a vacant site of seventeen years, abutted by the, the self-storage facility in the state's park and ride to the north, city-owned land and railroad properties to the west, Loudon Road Commercial Properties across the street to the south. And of course, east of Stickney Ave is the state-owned bus stop and park and ride in ninety-three. As you know, it was a former highway garage site used by DOT from the thirties. In two thousand and six, they ceased operation. Since that time, various commercial tenants have leased the space. Twenty fifteen, the northerly part was, was converted into the park and ride, as you see, as you see here. In twenty twenty-one, Brady Sullivan entered into an agreement with DOT to purchase five point five seven acres, which was comprised of the southerly portion of the site. With that came a historic preservation of the site and the existing buildings. Subdivision plan was approved by this board back in February of twenty twenty-two. At that time, we presented a comprehensive development plan, which showed the intended redevelopment project, which is very similar to the current project before you hear tonight. As Attorney Cronin mentioned, Old Stickney Ave, we went through the process to discontinue that. The city of council approved that in October of this past year. Existing site currently developed, as you can see, contains five vacant buildings, totaling a little over ninety thousand square feet. Site contains large paved areas, over eighty-five percent coverage. Access is provided via three curb cuts onto Stickney Ave proper, serviced by municipal sewer, water, gas, telecommunications, electric utilities. The site is really dead flat with the exception of the slope down to Stickney Ave. So with this plan, I, I offer, which is essentially the same aerial photo with our proposed redevelopment overlaying on top of it, propose to redevelop the existing buildings into eighty multifamily apartment units along with associated site improvements. Existing buildings will remain and be completely renovated. I'll work my way from south or plan left, north or plan right. Building A, which has eighteen units. Buildings B and C, which are the smaller buildings, have three units each. The H-shaped building, which is known as Buildings D through H, has forty-eight total units. Building I, which is north, abutting the park and ride, has eight units. All buildings are one-story as they exist today, with the exception of the H-shaped building, which a portion of that is two-story. Bedroom counts, nine one beds, forty-eight two beds and twenty-three three bedrooms. Access to the proposed project will be provided. We're going to keep two of the existing curb cuts along Stickney, the one to the north and the one to the south. We did receive a comment from the engineering department and I believe possibly this board during the subdivision process, asking us to consider eliminating the third curb cut, which is in the middle of the site, located in front of the H-shaped building, which our plan does represent. Parking, we're proposing a hundred and sixty spaces, or a hundred and sixty spaces is required, or two spaces per unit on-site. We did come down from some of the original proposals we had, both in response to comments we received from staff as well as other groups. Fifty-two spaces in the south, fifty-five in the north and fifty-three along Stickney. So we've got some pretty good balance of parking throughout the site. Lot coverage, as I mentioned, the existing site eighty-five percent. You can see it's covered with buildings and parking. We're proposing a reduction of about twenty percent, which is well over an acre. That would be converted to open space. Utilities, project will be serviced by public sewer, public water, gas, underground electric and telecommunications utilities. As Jose can attest to, there are significant utility infrastructure improvements needed to service this project, as well as the number of existing public utilities that cross the site. There's a number of public sewer and drain lines that bisect the site that come across from either Loudon Road or Store Street through our site to, to Stickney Ave. At the request of the engineering department, we've videoed, video inspected all of those lines. We've submitted those videos to the engineering department. Active lines will be lined or relocated if needed and inactive lines will be filled and abandoned in place. There's a lot of spaghetti on the site, which isn't unusual for historic property like this. And we will pledge to continue to work with Jose and staff on, on resolving the rest of these matters moving forward. Additional site improvements, new curving sidewalks, fencing, landscaping, site lighting, outdoor patio areas and stormwater management improvements. Detailed lighting and landscaping were provided as part of this application, been reviewed by staff. I did want to note that we did appear before the ADR committee and received a couple of comments, additional plantings in front of the H-shaped building to consolidate what was previously proposed as two outdoor patio spaces into one, which is, I apologize, I didn't see this screen here. We did have two outdoor patio spaces on the inside of the H-shaped building. We've now consolidated into one. They wanted us to provide a little bit more contiguous green space there, where possible. They wanted us to completely revise the site lighting, modify fixture pole types, decrease pole heights, increase the number of poles to give it a little bit more of a residential feel. They also requested as possible to add additional windows between Buildings A, B, C and I. We've got some limitations there with what we can commit to based on the US Park Service review of the project as part of the historic preservation. We have added those to the elevations. We will make that request and Chris can talk about that in a little more detail if you have questions. But all of those questions and comments were addressed and are incorporated into the plans before you tonight. Real quickly about stormwater, as I mentioned, you got heavy impervious cover on-site. Runoff really flows overland into the city system with no treatment. We're reducing impervious area by twenty percent, as I mentioned, about an acre of, of impervious that will now be converted to, to open space. This is significant reduction of peak flows and volumes leaving the site. Additionally, we're proposing some flow-through devices in some key areas, which will, will help improve in terms of the qualitative treatment of runoff before leaving the site. We believe the combination of these efforts will significantly improve stormwater compared to the existing site. Lastly, Merrimack River Greenway Trail, as was mentioned, we've been working with staff for about a year to provide connectivity on or around the site in coordination with the city's Store Street Extension Project. Staff has asked that, or has determined that it's premature for us to physically construct anything, but what we've been asked is to provide two easements. One between Loudon Road and Building A, the second along the site's frontage on Stickney Ave. And we're, we're in agreement with this approach and will work to, to finalize those easements moving forward. There are no waivers, site plan waivers being requested as part of this project. Of course, in addition to the site plan application, we're seeking ADR and CUP approvals tonight. tonight. We've reviewed the conditions of approval outlined by staff and have no comments. Lastly, we received some public questions and comments related to historical environmental matters on-site. Tim Andrews from Novus, the project's environmental engineer, did provide a comprehensive response, which we provided to Heather today, and he's here to answer any questions. That wraps up my end of the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Just, I was remiss in not mentioning that Arthur Sullivan is here this evening, number one, to keep an eye on us and make sure we do our job, and number two, to be available if there's any questions. And with respect to the environmental, we had some conversations about that in the comments, which are well noted. And Tim is fine with me representing that that's been a historic site with some environmental issues being monitored. I don't think there's any secret about that. It will continue to be operated and managed according to all of the applicable regulations, and to the extent any remediation is required, it will be done in accordance with the applicable regulations. Right now, no remediation is required. It's just monitoring, which is pretty typical for an urban site like this. Chris, maybe you could chat a little about the historic credit situation or the impact of it and the architectural design?
Absolutely, yes. Chris Lewis with Brady Sullivan Architect. This is a tax act project, so we will be going through the state tax, our historic commission, along with the Park Service, the National Park Service. So there is a lot of control that they have over, you know, how we're treating the buildings and redeveloping them. The big things that are going to happen on-site here, I mean, the obvious stuff right out of the gate are the new roofs to protect the buildings, new windows and doors, and the associated abatement that's part of that process. The repairing of the brick buildings, the masonry, along with repointing any deteriorating masonry components. In addition to that, the removal of any nonhistoric structures, old mechanical units, et cetera. As Tom mentioned, there is 80 units throughout the five buildings. If you go to the next slide, please. So Building A is one of the wood frame structure buildings. This will get a new roof that will be similar in nature to what it is today. We will be proposing siding that will be reviewed by the Park Service. So it'll essentially appear as it is today from that respect in terms of the materiality, but it will be new and fresh, along with the window fenestration. And several of these, we're proposing a few more windows to try to help the natural light inside of the new units. Next slide. Yes?
Was that the main building that ADR had had an issue with?
I think it was, it was actually Building I, I think, that they commented on. But these two buildings are very similar in the way that we're approaching them. They're a single-loaded corridor. On the slide on the left there, you see the blue, the blue line. That's the, essentially, double-loaded circulation corridor. All the units will access off that main floor with entry on either end of the building. Each unit has a ground level, a second floor with two bedrooms, and then a loft space above. The next two buildings, Buildings B and C, are a little bit more, or I guess they're a little bit less because they're a little bit smaller, but there is a little bit more to them in terms of how we're reconstructing them. Some of these we'll have to add a few more walls to, to reestablish the enclosure and insulate, et cetera. So these, both of these buildings, there's no interior circulation. So all these units are entered directly from the outside. Next slide, yeah. So, and as Tom mentioned earlier, each of them has three, three units per building. The main H-shaped building, these are the elevations of that, obviously this is the biggest of the buildings and probably the most work that we have to do relative to the restoration of them. So the green in this is the amenity spaces in our office. So essentially, we will maintain the existing front entry portion as it is today. Several of the units, you will be able to enter into small vestibules, and then several of them, you'll be able to enter directly from the outside. And it's all a function of the existing door locations and how the units are laid out. And this is Building I. This is the one where we've added additional windows along the lower level of the building. So windows are probably one of the bigger elements. I think that when people go by and see the transformation of the building from what it used to be to what it will be, the windows are the thing that really kind of helps it turn the corner. So this is a company that we use, that we've used on all of our historic projects. If you go to the next slide, you can see that we will essentially address every single window. We'll do a drawing that's approved by the Historic Preservation Office, and then it'll be reconstructed in kind. Go ahead. So these are just the different types of windows that, and surprisingly, there's really only three or four different types. And this is our typical canopy structure that we apply to each of the buildings at the entries. And this is just an example of some of the masonry deterioration that's occurring out there, and these are the things that we will be working with our historic consultant to reconstruct. And I wanted to just throw in a few images of what some of our other properties look like, and so you can get a flavor of just exactly how each of these are finished. And that wraps it up.
Beautiful. What's, I didn't see HVAC. Where's the, I know the roof lines look much better, but where's all the HVAC?
So there will be, there will be some HVAC condensers on the roofs. And so their typical residential units are splits, so they'll have just the condenser on the roof, yeah, directly above.
Questions? Amanda, pull up.
I just wanted to, thank you for reminding me. For, you addressed, just give me a little bit more detail about your environmental site assessment, because, I mean, I've walked through those buildings. I've seen the inside. I've seen what their original use was. And I'll be amazed to see a tour after this is done, to see how you guys have converted these, like especially where they had the one building that was used to paint the trucks, you know. So I can imagine there's definitely some environmental remediation to be done. And can you just elaborate a little bit more about that?
Well, maybe I can break Tim up if you'd like. Why don't I ask Tim to come up?
Good evening. Tim Andrews with Novus Group, working on behalf of the applicant. So to answer your question specifically, there's been a number of site investigations that have been completed on this property since 1996, underground storage tank closures, groundwater monitoring that is ongoing under a permit to manage existing groundwater contamination. There's currently more than 10 monitoring wells as part of a greater network out there that are monitored on a frequent basis, twice a year basically, as part of the permit. There were a number of other investigations that have been completed, including data gap investigations that have looked beyond existing underground storage tanks and other areas to evaluate things such as floor drains, hydraulic lifts, hazardous waste storage areas, things of that nature, that we've reviewed as part of our environmental due diligence. So we completed a Phase 1 environmental site assessment in accordance with ASTM requirements, that is EPA-recognized, all-appropriate inquiry for property transactions. The issues that we identified are consistent with what has been historically identified and managed under existing programs monitored and overseen by New Hampshire DES. So we would expect that we're going to continue to monitor the site under the existing permit and any other requests that come out of New Hampshire DES review, changes in data that occur. That's the purpose of monitoring right now, is to monitor the existing contamination, which is really only petroleum in nature. There are urban impacts from historical industry in soil, which would include certain pyrogenic contaminants that are very common from coal ash and other sources, as well as metal residuals in soils that are typically considered exempt from remediation because they're ubiquitous in our urban environments. You can go to a lot of developed properties within the footprint of the downtown Concord area, and you're going to encounter soils that you can't just dispose of randomly. You have to manage them, but they're not part of a remedial action because they're not a point source of contamination. They're a result of basically decades and decades of development. And discharges, example for, from automotive exhaust or, you know, byproducts of things like that, brake dust and things like that, that are, you're going to find in any type of urban situation.
So, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, so the end result is you're prepared for whatever you're going to find once you open things up and start to look?
Absolutely. And we will continue to work on behalf of Brady Sullivan to monitor, you know, once the development is completed, during construction, something unknown is discovered, and frequently that happens. We're working on other sites here in Concord for other developers where we have had to address that, working with the engineering department.
What's the, what's the monitoring process for that? So, you know, somebody's doing something and they come across something. What's the, what's the process for the development piece of it? Does somebody get notified? Does DES get involved? What's the normal process for a site like this, considering it's a dirty site?
Yeah, so it largely depends on, is it a known issue that we've identified during the construction, and it's being managed, and in which case, we would still coordinate with DES, but it doesn't hold a certain reportability, if you will, because all of those issues are already reported to DES and they're aware of it. If it's a new condition, it absolutely needs to be reported in accordance with the New Hampshire regulations that DES, you know, mandates, whether it's, you know, underground storage tank that wasn't expected, unexpected oil product on water surface or something like that, and excavations, things like that. And we do deal with that very frequently on sites like this.
Okay. All right. Did that answer your question, Amanda?
For ground, but when it's inside of the buildings is where, where, what was a lot of concern for me is, is
On walls, you mean?
In the walls, and that, yes.
In the concrete, whatever.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm just curious. I'm assuming you would hire someone like an, you know, a company that does all the remediation, that pulls all that out, so that, you know, something cleaning that you live in is not, you know, gassing, off-gassing from, like I said, from paint fumes of a truck being painted, and then that same building for 40 years, you know, so.
Yeah, my understanding is that the larger renovation will, you know, resurface a lot of the interior walls and such like that, but basically all the building materials, which I think you're referencing too, we're not working on that. I believe that is ATC is working on that. That was documented in one of the submittals that we provided, that they were on board to do the assessment and the abatement of the hazardous building materials, asbestos-containing materials, PCB-containing caucks and other materials like that, evaluation-led-based paint. That was either ongoing or, you know, will be conducted as part of renovations for the property in accordance with all the state and federal requirements. And, you know, by the time they're done, the abatement will meet the needs for the redevelopment of residential properties. It's very frequent in this type of development.
Yeah, and I would imagine so. It seems, it seemed extensive, so good luck.
That's a good question. Counsel Champlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for the great presentation. Thank you for adding housing stock to our city, which we desperately need. My question is really a matter of curiosity that I've had ever since I looked at your plans, and that is, my understanding from the Division of Historical Resources is that the historic preservation covenant is only on the H-shaped building. So why are you not making better use of the vertical space by demolishing the older buildings that you're now converting into housing and going up and increasing housing density, and I would assume increasing the return on your investment in this piece of property?
I think from, from our perspective, I mean, we always try to, you know, reuse and rehabilitate the structures that we purchase. In this particular case, and it can be difficult too, because the historic will look at this as a whole site as well, and they may, they may deem some of these other buildings as contributors. That's just our particular MO as we come into these projects, is we look at them as a whole. So, and that's the way we approached it in this case. And I think that, you know, from a financial standpoint, it certainly, I mean, it works for us. It works for our project.
I mean, that, follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. I mean, there are, there are examples, and I didn't come today prepared to tick them off, but there are examples across the country of complementary additional development, you know, as part of a historic, preserving a historic site. And this is such a key site in Concord, and will continue to be so with the extension of Store Street, and hopefully the infill that that generates, that it seems like a terrible waste of vertical space to be renovating these ancient, you know, one-story, one-and-a-half-story sheds rather than doing something more significant.
Well, I disagree with you.
And this is new because?
No, I mean, I think what they're, I mean, I don't know. I think that the historic piece would get lost in the jungle.
It can be done.
I think it, yeah, but I just think what they're doing, the scale is lovely.
I agree with her.
That's unheard of. Any other questions?
Yes, Carol.
Given the number of two- and three-bedroom units you're planning, it seems like you're planning for families. And I didn't see any sort of play area included in the grounds plan, so that's kind of part of that concern. And sort of associated with that, if there are children, is there a plan for some sort of fencing along the property line with the park and ride, which, I mean, I can just see three-year-olds scooting over there. And also to the west, which eventually gets to the railroad. And I'm not sure what the plan is for that property to the west, but I'm just concerned about accommodating the needs of families since you're clearly planning to attract families.
So maybe I could speak to maybe the site elements, and then either John or Chris can speak to the typical tenant that they would see. So it's a fair comment. It's an urban, you know, redevelopment site. It was mostly paved, you know, covered by buildings and parking. We're doing our best to reduce, you know, that footprint, impervious footprint. As I mentioned, we tried to create a little bit of a contiguous green space, you know, inside the H-shaped building, but recognizing for this type of project that we don't really have that great open space to be able to create much more than what we're proposing here while still meet the needs of the project. We're spreading out 80 units over a greater footprint because we're keeping the existing buildings. So we feel like we're doing the best we can in terms of open space. I will say there's an existing, or was an existing fence along that entirely westerly property line. We are proposing to tear down and replace that existing fence in kind along the entirely westerly side of the site. We're not really proposing any fencing to bisect the site from the park and ride, but we feel like there's a green space buffer there and don't really envision there to be too, too much connectivity between there. We're providing two spaces per unit, which we feel like is a healthy amount for this site. So we don't anticipate that this site will be a burden on that site or really, you know, too much in terms of connectivity that way. So.
Yeah, I can address, I think, for you, the outside amenities. The Brady Sullivan property issue, although you look at it, and I think the point you note with the number of bedrooms is a, is a good one, but I think in this case, the bedrooms are more a function of existing improvements. Chris and his team looks at it, and they lay out what could fit. Ideally, you probably wouldn't have that configuration with that unit split. I was asked to do an analysis for Manchester at 1230 Elm Street, which is a former utility company building that's now in the process of being redeveloped. Also, the lofts on Bedford Street in Manchester, Jefferson Mill, where there's some housing. The Brady Sullivan model is really not a children model. They're certainly welcome if they want, but in these urban locations, what we find of young professionals will come in and they split the route, right? One takes one bedroom, one takes another, and often they use a third bedroom for an office. Sometimes you have professional couples as well. But I think at 100 units at 1230, the school-age children projected
But I think at a hundred units at twelve-thirty, the school age children projected was about three. You will see some people that occupy these buildings that may have children on the weekends in exchange with a spouse, and they take them elsewhere for their recreation, whether they go to the mountains or the beach or whatever. But if you're someone that wants open space, swing sets and a lot of outdoors, this is probably not going to be the place for you. And it's somewhat market-driven, look for something else that has those type of amenities. But at the end of the day, the number of school age children in all of these properties across the portfolio, and we're talking about, I don't know how many units now, but thousands, very, very small number.
Okay, thank you.
Good point. I had written down, we'd gotten a comment regarding a survey, and I wrote down AAI-ESA, and for the life of me couldn't remember where I'd read it. But I did find it, and it said, "An all-appropriate inquiry slash environmental site assessment." We got some testimony from a concer-, a citizen that asked if one of those had been done. I think that's probably a question for the-
Mr. Andrews, yes.
Mr. Andrews. But has one of those been done? Sorry. I, I would have asked you when I got here, but I, I couldn't find the question.
No, I, and that was part of my introduction, I guess, before, was we did complete an environmental site assessment that meets the requirements for all appropriate inquiry as part of the environmental, you know, due diligence process. And, you know, I've done this on a number of sites like this on behalf of Brady Sullivan. So this is standard operation. It's typically required for any type of financial purpose for when you're, you're getting finances. Banks want to see that because it's a liability protection for their investment. It's a protection to the prospective purchaser because it provides basically the baseline of the conditions to expect at a site based upon a standardized, ASTM standardized process.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Jeff?
So, I'm looking at what's going on on Stickney Ave already, what used to be there. I've sat down there at night and I'm looking at the entrance and wondering if a traffic study was done to make sure during the peak hours that the queues waiting for that signal aren't going to block your driveway so that a car that wants to make a left turn in now has to wait either for the courtesy gap or wait for the light to go green. So now we're taking the potential of backing cars out into the intersection.
I'll suppress the question on why you're sitting down there watching it at night, but other than that.
You read my mind.
I wasn't going to say it. I wasn't going to say it.
Sorry that I'm a concern. Citizens- So, the other concern I have is, obviously if anybody's there on holiday weekends when the school, kids are on vacation, that park and ride is full, the cars parked on the side of Stickney Ave. How are you going to police keeping people, A, from parking in your lot when the park and ride is full, or when your lot fills up for them to be parking in the parking lot?
They were parked up on the hill.
Yeah, if I may add, I've seen them come all the way.
Up onto the hill last, two weeks ago.
Towing works pretty well.
Towing works pretty well. Sign?
And the signs, not as well, but certainly signs help. And, and the third thing, which I don't know how many, if any, of your properties have them, but other ones we've done, the key pass gates.
Yeah.
You don't like to do those, but generally a proper notice and some towing gets the message out pretty quickly that you're not supposed to be here. We'll also have security cameras that certainly will show what's going on at the site, and if there is a repetitive habit of people, you know, occasionally you get the, the folks that'll use your dumpster on a regular basis that you pick up on those cameras and you can either send a nice note or track them down and say, "This isn't appropriate."
We'll send them down to the school street parking lot. They usually use that one.
So, is there an onsite manager that's going to manage that parking and be listening to complaints, or is this something that has to happen repeatedly and go back to the main office and then three weeks later it's finally dealt with?
No, we'll have, our office is manned.
Okay, and then I, we kind of skipped over to the parking. You never really answered my question about the traffic because I do have concerns with that, how it's going to operate. You know, you've got roughly a hundred and eighty feet between the stop bar and where your driveway is. One bus is going to take up coming out of there, and most of them make lefts. I just can see this being a problem, and I'm wondering if you've looked at it to see what the impacts are.
So as part of the project application, the project's traffic consultant, Steve Pernoff, prepared a trip generation analysis essentially to look at the, the comparison or the, to document the peak trips associated with this use. I believe there was some communication both with city staff and DOT as it relates to if any further study was, or analysis was warranted for this project. I do know they requested a contribution to be provided for some signal equipment upgrades at this intersection, but that was the extent of the analysis that was provided or requested as part of this review.
Just wanted to clarify, that was the state, the contribution?
Correct, yes.
Just to clarify, that wasn't the city.
So, follow up?
Yeah.
So Heather, what was provided? I mean, was it a trip generation study that just said, "How many cars?" Was it an actual analysis of the signal to show what the impact of those cars were?
It was not an analysis of the signal as far as I, as I recall. It was very early in the process that we did all the traffic, and I think Karen Hill was here at that time, so I didn't actually have a whole lot of involvement with that, with, with, but the determination from engineering. Jose, do you recall?
I, I don't, I have a check, but my computer died at eleven.
So did mine.
I got locked out of mine. I had to have her log in. But it was determined early on that it either didn't trigger for whatever reason, the comparison with the previous use, with the proposed use, it might have been.
The previous use is two thousand and six. I mean, you've expanded the park and ride, they've expanded bus services then. To go back and say what DOT did back in two thousand and six, I don't think it's really an appropriate comparative analysis.
So.
Yeah, if I could, I, I don't think we attempted to take credit for that in the, in the memo that was provided. I think it had said essentially that, that it'd be tough to quantify here is that the trips were anticipated to generate, and I don't think those trips met the level to, to require further analysis. We did not perform any intersection analysis at Loudoun Road in Stickney Ave, nor were we requested to as part of the application process.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Any member of the audience wish to address this application? I answer your question about the, the environmental, John?
Some of it.
Okay, I saw our hand go up. I saw our hand.
Just, just before-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just to respond to one question.
Yeah.
I didn't see the report in this case for traffic, but I've seen enough of these over the years with these types of projects and compared to office developments or retail. And keep in mind that with eighty units, these aren't really peak hour generators, which is where your traffic study really focuses on. With residential, you have dispersment on a much wider band across the day as opposed to an office opening at eight or nine, where people are coming in at seven to nine hour and leaving from four to six. So it spreads it out more across the day, and that may not, may be one of the reasons why further analysis was not required.
Great, thank you for that.
I, I apologize, I should have attached this traffic memo. It was so early in the process and we didn't ask them to follow up, but I do have it if you, you want me to share it with you.
No, certainly.
Okay, we'll have you guys hop back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Regan, to the table. How are you? If you could just state your name for the record?
John Regan.
And your affiliation to this organization, Mr. Regan?
I'm a resident of Concord for nearly forty years.
Former planning board member. I have to put it in there, but it just, but it's, you're long retired. You're long retired, John.
Completely unrelated to the project.
All right.
I was going to commend the board on the continuing upgrade in the quality of board members.
Oh, okay.
The command has had more comments tonight than I did in my nine-and-a-half years that I was on the board.
All right, what do you got to say, Mr. Regan?
We miss you, John.
It's getting late.
But we don't want to give up, Amanda, go ahead.
You can fill that in later. We know how to get ahold of you. Don't worry about that.
I can chew gum and-
We'll, we'll fill, we'll fill it in for you.
Initial comments, and I appreciate that, you know, Richard, you read my letter and I know-
I, I wrote down the acronym. I just couldn't remember what the hell it meant, so.
And I think it reflected some of the comments that you heard from other board members. My initial comment is I support redevelopment of the, the project. It's a gateway, it's a high-profile site, it's currently an eyesore, and it's underutilized, has been underutilized for many years. I also support the concept of brownfield developments at all levels, you know, federal, state, local, you know, obviously private sector bringing in resources to put properties, repurpose properties and get more use out of them. And having been in town for forty years or so, have talked to a number of people about the site. I know people who work there, and, because they would tell me, geez, you know, what are you going to do with that property because it's contaminated? You can't do anything with it. You're going to have to just tear it down and leave it there. And said, "No, that's not the case." You know, you need to understand environmental conditions, and you need to basically design appropriately to those to mitigate any, you know, concerns so that people that reoccupy it are not, you know, or during construction are not exposed to, to risk, so. And, and along the way, you know, when I first saw the project being proposed, I asked whether environmental site assessment had been done because that would be pretty typical as Tim had mentioned. And I didn't see any reference to it, and then I, I talked to staff a little bit, said, "Well, geez, a property like this normally would, would have an environmental site assessment." And for those on the board who don't know me, I was in, I actually worked in contaminated site program for about thirty-five years. I worked for the, for the state, back when there was no contaminated site program that kind of started. So when I acquired, I was through, through planning staff who's encouraged to hear the environmental site assessment had been done, and I know Nobis is a very well-qualified and experienced consultant doing brownfield stuff, so I was encouraged by that. And I also know that there was a hazardous building materials to talk about things like asbestos, lead paint, you know, PCBs, mercury, those kinds of things. And I also saw the recommendation that's, that's in the next thing, and I, I sort of encouraged that. And I can appreciate the board and, and the city staff sort of looking at an environmental site assessment and saying, geez, normally you'd look at that and say, "Does that look like it's okay?", but it's, or, or just to do a, a quality control check on it. And that's probably not something that, you know, is necessarily in your wheelhouse, sort of. And one of the things that, that I thought of, and Ron and I have talked about this, and we, and we didn't come up here together because we get often associated with the two guys in, in the Muppets that are in the balcony.
Oh, my God.
And also sometimes, we, the substance of our comments is similar, but sometimes we end up with slightly different recommendations. And, and what, and my recommendation is, is really a suggestion to the applicant, is that they would review the, or review and submit the environmental site assessment to DES. DES does do that, does meet with people, and it's a way to have some assurance that, that what is being done is not creating any additional risk to, I mean, because you are going from industrial use to, to residential, so it's not, it can be done, and, and they, they mentioned that they've done it, but it is one of those things, you, you still want to do that. You want to be thoughtful when you do it. And I'm not saying that they haven't been thoughtful, but it's just nice, I think it would be, give the board and the city an extra level of comfort if, if that could be done. I'm not, if there's any questions for me.
Run it by me again? So the, the assessment's been done, but it hasn't been submitted to, it's not, as part and parcel, it's not usually submitted?
There are certain things, when you do an environmental site assessment, sometimes you know there are certain conditions that the states are aware about.
Yeah.
And sometimes the purpose of environmental site assessment is to look at things that maybe aren't known, like floor drains that were closed out in areas where hazardous materials were used. Now, I haven't worked at the state, I know at the time, basically, they just wanted people to close those, so they just sent plug them.
Yeah.
So you don't know what was there, because, because if you had asked somebody to do investigation, they would have left the floor drains open, and then there was the opportunity for continuing stuff to be discharged to them.
Yeah.
And before, there was a certain time where they, those floor drains were probably connected to, to the ground because they weren't connected to the city sewer. So are those something that, and again, I, I, the environmental site assessment report wasn't submitted to the city. We saw the summary report, which was encouraging, but I think, again, sometimes looking at a, a site like this and the complications that a site like this has, again, whether the, I understand the boards wrestle sometimes with what's in your purview.
Yeah.
And so my suggestion is to the applicant that they, you know, I think it would be a good thing to do for all parties.
We'll ask.
To, to submit that to the state and review it with them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Regan?
Heather told me I could talk forty-five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, well, that was-
Thirty-five to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was if they canceled the casinos. That, that's not happening, so you're off.
That was after we leave.
Thank you for your testimony, John.
Thank you, John.
So here's the other half.
Here's the other half of the Muppets, huh?
Here's Statler.
So Ron Rayner, residence since eighty-nine, Romford Street. So, I don't know, I have prepared some detailed memorandums that I have shared with the city. Agree with many of the comments that John said, virtually all, which is almost unheard of. And I do, I also applaud the, the applicant for trying to do well with this historic preservation structure. Where we may differ is, again, I've done this for my career, that the past use of this facility as an industrial setting, it was very typical in the day to have floor drains, as John had mentioned. And they always went to a dry well, simple, pure, because there was no sewer in the area. And if and when one did come through in the fifty's, sixty's, seventy's, it would have gone out to the Merrimack River as a combined sewer. So, so I did some research within DES files, saw some correspondence between DOT and DES that the floor drains were closed out and connected to the municipal sewer in ninety-seven. So if they were connected in nineteen ninety-seven and the building was constructed in nineteen twenty-six, okay, there's a little bit of a data cap there. So, you know, they maintain vehicles in there, there's always drippage, there's always oil, there's always antifreeze, and two or three of the bays had solvents for paint spraying operations, both for vehicle maintenance, trucks, highway trucks, as well as signage. They did a lot of the state highway DOT signs, and you're going to have solvents in there. To miscorrect, there's a groundwater management permit onsite now. It's active, it's being implemented. They have found contaminants, they found volatiles, both non-chlorinated as well as a few chlorinated, which are likely from the paint spraying operations. And it's really appropriate that they further investigate these floor drains before really going much further. Why? One, Tim's correct that you, basically, you want to do an environmental site assessment, which by the way, really would have been helpful if it had been submitted to the city. It would have probably saved me a lot of time. We did see your environmental status letter, appreciate that, saw that, but the full-blown environmental site assessment would have been most helpful, would have provided more detail, perhaps some more insight on the floor drain issue. But the, if they were further investigated, it would probably provide further benefit to the financial company that, yes, because of the historic uses of this site, we really can sleep well at night. It would also uncover if anything is found, they can do it now during construction rather than post, or have it negatively impact residents once they're inside the facility. Now, just to clarify, I'm speaking of contaminants below ground, not above. I'm not talking about asbestos or PCBs or lead, I'm talking below ground. So I feel it would be prudent for, one, to, for them to submit the ESA to the environmental site assessment to DES and a copy to the city. Two, that they initiate some sampling of the floor drains, they'll have to core through some of the concrete in the bay areas just to take a sample, but it gets into a gray area because as, as one of the applicants mentioned, unless they find a quote "new condition," they really don't have to do anything further. Well, if you don't do any sampling, you're not going to, if you don't sample, guess? So it'd be prudent that this be done. It's the right thing to do. I've done it for decades in my own practice. I've recommended it to industrial clients. Did they all do it? No. Did some? Yes. And they felt better after they did it. They didn't like going to the state saying, "Guess what, we have an issue." But you can work with the state. So my suggestion is that we're in a gray area with the applicant stating that everything will be done in accordance with all state and federal criteria, kind of a slippery slope unless a new condition is found.
Great.
Questions?
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your testimony. Yes.
Heather, yes.
So, do you have a specific recommendation regarding the, you were talking about the drains were disconnected. Where were they for the previous 70 years?
Yeah.
Do you have a specific suggestion for how you think that should be addressed? Or is that just related to...
They would not, yeah. You sample. See, if you went in there now...
So, you're not satisfied with the sampling that they have done. You're saying more sampling should be done.
That's right. The sampling they have done is out beyond the buildings where the tanks were located. Monitoring wells are quite some distance away from the building and from the garage bay floor drain area. So if the sampling was done within, say, a 10, 15-foot contiguous semicircular radius around the floor drain, that would make sense. But that has not been done to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Questions?
I think we're good. Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Did we get a chance for any...
Yeah, you'll have it. I just want to hang on just a second. I just want to, nobody else. Okay, come on up.
Thank you. So, you know, hearing Ron's concerns, I understand where he's coming from. We submitted additional comments or response to comments to his email that was sent to Heather regarding some of the additional concerns. And there has been previous data gap studies that have been performed, some of them in the vicinity of floor drains in 2001, which postdates the 1997 date that DES acknowledged that all of the floor drains had been connected to the municipal works. So, there is data out there that has been collected. I'm not going to say it's comprehensive to everything because it's not something that's always even possible when you have an unknown network of floor drain piping and things like that. But the data that was collected includes soil and groundwater in the vicinity of these data gaps post the closure of the floor drain issue. And it does not indicate any point source contamination has been identified beneath the footprint of the existing buildings consistent with the other external sampling that has been conducted to date. So, yes.
So, thank you for that. My understanding was that his concern was pre-1997. Where was this stuff going if it, between 1926 and 1997? Are there issues there that need to be investigated?
Was it going to a drywall?
Yeah, was it going to a drywall? Is there a location that should be tested for these contaminants?
You could be looking for a needle in a haystack. So, the comments that I saw were related to evaluations in the vicinity of the floor drains.
Yeah.
Which has been completed in a general sense. And, you know, we don't know if there are unknown drywells and the piping wasn't documented or anything like that. We don't have that data. I don't know if that data exists. So, I will say that the groundwater contamination that has been identified at the site and the number of wells that have been installed over the years in investigations is fairly comprehensive. And that the signature in the groundwater, the contamination that's identified in the groundwater has consistently related to petroleum contamination that the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has attributed to the leaking underground storage tanks. There was one area of chlorinated VOCs, probably related to some type of a solvent release, on the northern portion of the site away from site buildings. Prior consultants before our involvement had attributed this to off-site upgrading sources such as the Romford Press and other sites that existed at the time. That issue regarding the chlorinated VOCs was closed out in 2018 when the groundwater results met the criteria that New Hampshire DES expects. So, from the perspective of New Hampshire DES currently, in concert with the other data that we reviewed as part of our evaluation for the due diligence, the only concern that New Hampshire DES is currently concerned with is the continuing leaking underground storage tank issues that are monitored under the permit and will continue to do so. I also want to clarify, we do have obligations of managing conditions identified onsite. We're not just allowed to just let things lie if we identify them. We still have to do everything in accordance with New Hampshire DES regulations. My statement before was merely, it may not be considered a new reportable condition if it's related to, for example, storm drain installation in the presence of old petroleum contaminant area. We still have some obligation to coordinate with New Hampshire DES on anything when we're managing that type of contamination that's already documented on a site. So it doesn't allow us free rein to let things lie without involvement of the regulator. So I do want to make sure that my point before wasn't misunderstood.
So, would it make sense, or would you be open to providing the assessment that you did to DES or going through it with them? Or do they already have it?
Provided my client is fine with that and I don't see why that would be a problem. I'd be happy and I've already coordinated with the DES on this site when we were undergoing the due diligence process to ask questions.
You got a thumbs up from the back of the room, so...
So, my client is on board with that approach.
It wasn't me.
No, yeah.
So, there's a condition on the recommendation that we can sort of...
Tweak a little.
Tweak a little to, if it's okay with your client.
To ask that that be submitted to DES and to the city, though.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Yes, sorry, Amanda.
I don't know if this is for you or for the other part of the team, so if anyone needs to come back up, that's okay. Does, so Byron asked a question earlier about, you know, the H building that we know has got some architectural significance, which is, you know, protected and the historical. And these other buildings surrounding four or five buildings set around the two that are, I think, an old barn and/or shed that was, if they were to be disturbed, does that trigger environmental additional study? And is that why they're not being torn down to do newer or vertical? Does that trip some other study that would open up a whole can of worms?
So, on the environmental piece, demolition itself doesn't constitute a release under the context. As Ron had mentioned, he was talking about subsurface contamination versus above-ground issues, which is practically, you know, particularly related to building materials.
Yeah.
They're managed separately because something released to the ground is considered a release of a pollutant where materials constructed intentionally with asbestos, with lead, they're a product that was produced at a time when it was acceptable. So they're managed differently. So demolition of a building doesn't constitute a new, if you will, environmental release or obligation for that. You have to manage the building materials.
Yes.
You still have to be very protective of workers and things like that. So if that's what you're asking, yes, there is an obligation to abate any hazardous materials prior to any demolition that goes on. As to why they're not, I would have to defer to others. I'm assuming that they're part of the historical value to the property and they're going to remain in place as part of the development, which is why they're not proposed for.
That's what we heard. Okay, good. Other questions? Counsel Champlin?
But if you excavate it in order to build, put the foundation of a new building down, that might open up issues, depending on what you found.
It could, absolutely. And we've...
It might not, but it could.
We, you know, we've run into underground storage tanks that nobody knew was there or, you know, piping with unknown substances or things of that nature. So, and, you know, if there's excess spoils or, you know, soil that can't be used, reused onsite, we would be obligated, knowing we're in the vicinity of the old rail yard. There's a lot of various types of, again, these urbanized impacts. We need to manage that soil. It can't just go offsite as clean material. We need to verify, you know, how we're managing that, you know, even if we're not planning on using it onsite.
True. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And no other comments from the audience? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and move into the recommendation piece, which is extensive. I'm shocked there's no waivers. Just shocked. But 6.1 is to grant architectural design approval to redevelop five vacant DOT highway garage structures into 80 multifamily residential units at 11 Stickney Avenue in the Opportunity Corridor. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that approval as outlined? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 6.2 is to grant the conditional use permit to Article 2845E1. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved, second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, yep.
That was made by who and seconded? I think we're having a...
Somebody and somebody.
I made the motion.
And I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. 6.3 is to grant the major site plan approval to redevelop the five vacant lot, the five vacant lot, five vacant DOT highway garage structures into 80 multifamily residents at 11 Stickney Avenue. I didn't ask about naming. You guys got any signage on the building?
Still in the works.
Still in the works. So, outlined in the major site plan approval, precedent conditions one through nine and subsequent conditions one through five. Would someone like to make them, with a slight modification to...
Replacing the first sentence of six, precedent condition six, to say, provide the environmental assessment to DES for review and to the city for record purposes. And the rest of the comments stays the same.
Okay. Very good with that. So again, outlined in precedent conditions one through nine with the modification to six and subsequent, yeah, and subsequent conditions one through five. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan?
So moved, second.
Approval, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And you've never been so happy to see that the last two items on our agenda have been postponed.
Absolutely.
As you are tonight. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.
Bless.
Holy gosh, I thought we'd get out earlier tonight.